Conflicts of interest which reflect that agenda, you can declare that now. Don't see any, so we'll move into the minutes of January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. I have a mover in seconds or three minutes to apply alters, to apply Kyle. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor? We'll turn it over to Trevor and Donna for the property management.
Okay, my name is Trevor Lester, we met at the last committee that we attended, sorry, obviously you've had many since then. I did offer that time to do a very brief overview of what the socializing portfolio is. So I will send a PDF of this to everybody. I'm just gonna speak to some of the notes, just to say you have a history of what we are. So the original history of government assisted housing began with the wartime housing. After every little atrium housing you see everywhere. After the soldiers returned from the war, the federal government built one and a half story homes to settle all the soldiers. Then we had in the sixties, public housing, the LAC corporations. Where they were built, very simple, everybody there lived in a hundred percent, or in rent geared income. Every tenant was rent geared income. In the nineteen nineties, the government at the time, basically the NDP government, created social housing that we exist and operate in now. Where basically about sixty percent, sixty to seventy percent of the residents pay rent geared income. The rest of our tenants over there simply market tenants. So we operate as a not-for-profit with a perspective of market tenants and subsidized units. On lower down on page one there, history of federal build, it was started by this council, there was all this money that was available in the nineteen nineties. But I do wanna highlight points one and two there. Is that two of the core principles that all the non-profits were to agree to at the time. And I offer these, I think this is important because we have made short hold to this and this is something we fundamentally believe in. Is that affordable housing is one of the critical building blocks that allow the occupants to improve the quality of their lives. We also believe too that tenants are treated equally despite their income situation. You mean, we don't treat an RGI unit any different than a market unit. We don't say, oh, the RGI unit will paint, or we won't paint it, you know, et cetera. So it's something we believe, it was signed by the original people. And sort of pass that on to you, sort of as a generational debir that works that you would not expect us to treat people in different way. We're not for profit corporation. Our goal is not to make profit, but it is to at least, very least, break even every year. We do try to have a small surplus each year because of rainy days. We are governed by certain things. The first thing is the letters patent. You might say, if you ever question why do we exist? We go with letters patent, they tell you. We are created to provide and operate housing accommodations primarily for persons of low to modest income. That's why we're built. They also have some sub clauses, special provisions. The second one, the directors shall serve without remuneration. And our director shall directly or indirectly receive profit from it. And then the third thing, this is sort of interesting, I was shocked by this, but your actual letters say, in the event that this corporation should ever dissolve, the remaining assets will be distributed to a charitable organization which carries on and on. So you never said yourself, where do we close it up? We actually have to give the money away to a charity. Many groups, we have another group that's, we're going with, it actually seems like, you know, a non-profit. But I say, your letters originally say it goes to a charity. You have bylaws, and the main organizational bylaw is bylaw number one. So we go to that, say, how does this place operate? There are a couple clauses there, three point oh two, which says, membership of the corporation shall consist of ex-official members only. An ex-official member is all councilors of the corporation that the town shall burn, shall well in office be ex-official members, and shall cease to be a member of a ceasing hold office on council for any reason. So congratulations by becoming councilors, you're all on. And while you may think this is the most exciting committee to be part of, if you lose your council seat next time, folks, you're all gone. I'm kidding. But you lose, you are simply there by disposition. So Walter and I, we were talking earlier, we're gonna talk about the actual titles, the officers. But there's no voting in here because you become members by this clause. And we do have governance, the primary thing we're governed by is the Housing Services Act, which is a provincial rule. And I did miss earlier on, the funding for this program was devolved in two thousand to the local service manager, which in this case is the county of Dufferin. So they traded off services in two thousand. So the rules are made by the province, the Housing Services Act. But the actual funding is funded by the county of Dufferin, which somebody here is probably a member of the county of Dufferin. Steve?
Steve.
Okay, so you would be familiar with that. So when we talk about the service manager and where we get our funding from, that actually comes with the money that you share to the county of Dufferin and they pay for the housing, it was a trade-off. So the Housing Service Act sets up the conditions for tenant selection. So for the rent geared income people, they're chosen by chronological. First on gets first offer. With the exception of special priorities which are using women, people who are victims of domestic abuse. So if you're at risk, you immediately go to the top of the list. Which makes sense because we don't want men or women who are at risk living in a housing situation to stay there. They go to the top of the list. But then when we run out of those candidates for a unit, it's a person who's been waiting two years, three years, even four years for a housing unit. So in rent geared income, rent geared income, we get no choice other than first come, first served. We are required by the service manager to maintain an income mix. It's called the target plan. And the current target is thirty rent geared income and fifteen market units. So that's actually in our case sixty-six point six percent, but some are sixty, some are seventy. So it's a target though. So a rent geared income person that live there, they might get a new boyfriend, they might get a new job. They can actually become a market tenant and just live there as a market tenant. So our target does move during the year. They're allowed to stay there for twelve months, but the point being, sometimes our job people will come market people. So we try to stay at that income mix. But fifteen people were there market, thirty are RGI. RGI tenants pay thirty percent of the revenue as rent. There are few conditions, but basically the tenant earns a thousand dollars a month, the rent's three hundred dollars. There's some exceptions to that, you know, you sort of wondered what people are paying, thirty percent, they make two thousand dollars, rent's six hundred. And if they go up to three thousand dollars, the rent would be nine hundred dollars and then they'd just be considered a market tenant at that point. RGI tenants are eligible for a certain size unit based on their family size. If they add family members, this is one of the tricky parts. So a single mom moves in with one child, or a family moves in with one child. If they add two more children, and they were qualified for a one to bedroom originally, they don't, they qualify for a three bedroom, but there's no legalities for them to move up. But trust me, under the act says if they lose two children because they moved out because they've aged, we force them to move out to a smaller unit. It's the requirement of the Housing Services Act, we disobey them. Financially, every year we have a operating budget, revenue have to equal expenses. There are two main sources of revenues, the tenant rents and the service manager's subsidy, so we do get subsidy, we'll talk about. The revenue for tenants include parking charges, rents. Philville though must decide each year to raise the rent by the rent control guideline, or we suffer from it. So the funding is designed, if the rent control guideline is about two percent, our funding is reduced by two percent. And the simple answer is, if you raise rents, it's revenue neutral for you for the year. If you choose not to raise rents, then you have to figure out what your surplus, how to pay for that. So we're sort of governed by going to the rent control guideline, but in saying that, we aren't required to. Rent geared income tenants pay rent according to the rules. And the service managers pay federal, pays federal and RGI subsidy. So if somebody's paying four hundred dollars a month rent, and let's just say our rents are eight hundred dollars, we get four hundred dollars a month for that tenant. At the beginning of the year, I do a budget, I ask for so much money, I'll say, I need fifty thousand dollars, that's how much money I will get from the RGI people. At the end of the year, we summarize it all up, and we made about fifty-two thousand dollars, so we have to give some money back. Or if the rent's only forty-eight thousand, but they do top up to the full market rent for the RGI. So they're just, they de facto are RGI members, so to speak. Or market tenants, they just get subsidy from the service manager. Philville do pay full taxes and shelter, but the taxes are included in the finding for the service manager. So this was all delegated to Dufferin how they're supposed to do this, but they actually call it flow-through. But you guys do get taxes from our property, you know, which is nice. There's also an operating subsidy, and the subsidy is based on certain benchmarks. Certain items like electricity, water insurance were all set up in two thousand and six. And the system is on, if you can beat those benchmarks, that's your profit. And when you beat those benchmarks, like we added the air makeup unit about two years ago. When that, when we spend less than that, we have a surplus which we then reinvest in the portfolio, which is why we have free wifi throughout the portfolio. Because when you make a profit, when we reduce our electricity, we're a non-profit group. Make sure I don't get a bonus, nobody gets a bonus, we reinvest into the property. But the benchmark was set up and our goal is always to beat the benchmarks. Very quickly, the board responsibilities, they have a duty of care. You're to perform your duties officially, honestly, and with faith in the best interest of the corporation. I vote for the conflict of interest and confidentiality, I'll pass on that because I think you've been probably very well trained in that in your roles. But we do expect conflicts of interest or confidentiality to be kept. Directors and officers liability. The only thing you are personally responsible in a corporation is for six months of salaries and for six months of ED premiums. So you'd always make sure that we are paying your salaries and benefits for your employees. That's actually something you're responsible for as a corporation. You do have full indemnification. You can be paid back for expenses, so if you do go to a conference, or if you do have to drive here, we can pay for that. To explain the board managers, board and property manager rules. The board is ultimately responsible for the governance of the organization. You create the vision, the framework, et cetera, which is basically saying we want non-profit housing, you know, affordable. And then the property management firm is to provide administrative, technical, and program expertise. So we do your financials, we do the capital spending, we do that type of stuff, and that's where our role and business is. You know, they just let everybody sort of clear that. We do have annual general meetings, five months after year end, so we'll have an AID, where the auditor does have a full audit for you, that's a requirement. The board meetings are used on a quarterly basis. We do recommend directors attend all meetings. I give this presentation on groups, but sort of a polite reminder, you know, if you're a volunteer, but we do expect you to be here, you know, for other groups in particular. The minutes are kept for all AGMs, we have them, if you ever want all the minutes, they're all electronically kept. You go through the last twenty-five years of history of this property. And I think I'll just end there with, just the last page is annual tax and non-profit return. You are a chair, a non-profit group, you don't have any tax implications, but we do follow tax, we check for it every year. So there is more information for you to read. If you have any questions, you can contact me. There will be a site visit at some point in the future, it's certainly easier now that the weather's getting a little better. But you're welcome to come over and see the property with us, you know, tour it, so you know what we're talking about. Any questions there?
Can you mention that if we dissolve, we have to give it to charity?
Yes.
What if we upload to the county and we're not involved anymore?
That would be a very interesting question because, let's say, are there any assets left from that? It would be an interesting question.
Because they are not a charity, so, and I know a few years ago, we were actually looking pretty seriously at uploading it to the county.
Yeah.
And getting out of the business of non-profit housing.
And the question would be a sort of legal one to, are there any assets? If you just gave it away, are there local charities who say, that building's worth ten million dollars? You just gave that away? I think you're supposed to give us the proceeds. Just saying that aloud, as a, you know, I'm not a legal expert, but that is in your bylaw, in your original articles in corporation.
Can't change that.
Again, legal question, Wade might know, artificially as a lawyer, like what they need chainsaws?
Yeah, I think there'd be, there'd be two workarounds, you could either amend the letters patent or the county would just assume control of the corporation as it exists. You're not actually dissolving the corporation, you're just transferring it from our control to the county control. And then it's not being dissolved, therefore you don't have to rid yourself of the assets.
And I include that caveat for all my groups, because some of them say certain things. Again, lots of my non-profit groups are thinking, what if I did? Close up shop, right? You're a little different here, but, you know, it's a general presentation, so to speak, but that's what yours specifically say.
Yeah, I was looking at closing up shop, I was thinking about uploading it to the county, so we can look after it, I mean, after all, in all fairness, they're fine, you know.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Trevor on that side?
Okay, thank you. Now we'll carry on with the financials. So now you know a little bit more about it, we'll look at how we're doing. We'll go to the balance sheet right here, it's about the fifth page, seventh page in, we slide up. Currently, we have eighty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars in the bank. In the reserve funds, we have thirty-five thousand one eighty-five, of which we're actually short eighteen thousand nine eighty-six. So the money from the bank account is technically owed to the reserve funds there. Because we are supposed to have fifty-four thousand dollars in a reserve fund. We could move that money over, we just haven't done it because as we do things during the year, it's capital in, capital out. So at this point, it's in a negative position, but we have the money to cover the debt owing to the reserves. Accounts receivable, as of March thirty-first, it was four thousand one fifty-six. As of March twentieth, it was forty-five ten, of which only one thousand dollars was over thirty days overdue. And other than that, seven hundred dollars is water bill. So what happens is, we pay the water bill for the tenants, and then they, for the townhouses, and then they pay us. So it always, it's almost always two months in arrears by the time that runs around. So we have very little money sitting at risk at this point. Donna says that most we have three tenants that are over twelve hundred dollars that we consider mildly at risk. And when our total revenues are six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year, that's pretty good. Because our market prices are very fair, and so we just don't have right now a situation where people bailing on off any rents. Carrying on, other due, due from county, at the end of last year, we believe we owed the county of Dufferin seven hundred and thirteen dollars. The subsidy receivable, twenty-eight thousand seven sixty-two, that is paid April first from March, because that's the day the mortgage payments come out. So they set it up from day one, we give you our the big check to make sure your mortgage payments never bounce. HST receivable, nineteen thousand two seventy-three, so we get back about ninety percent of the HST we charge. Which means, right now it's at nineteen thousand two seventy-three, you fall six months after the year end, so it's always waiting for us. The miscellaneous receivable, nine hundred and eleven dollars, that's the solar panels we have on the roof. That ended there, but year there's money owing, you know, like there are twenty days in arrears. Their prepaid expenses of eight thousand and forty dollars is our insurance, we prepaid the insurance for the year. So instead of having eight thousand dollars in our pants, we actually have prepaid the insurance for the rest of the year. The original land was worth seven hundred and sixteen thousand, the original building cost is three point two million, the equipment's sixty-nine thousand. We, I do wanna comment that, the going rate now, right now of apartment buildings is about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to build. We have forty-five units, the building's worth about eleven to twelve million dollars if you're gonna replace it. And we owe, we paid down two point five, we're down to one point seven million dollars. And the building is basically worth twelve million dollars.
So I got a question.
Sure.
Insurance wise.
Yes.
If had prior, with the prior threat of building, are we insured for twelve mil?
I will look into it, but yes.
Because I don't wanna be caught short that we end up having to replace a building and not having an insurance to cover the cost of the building.
I will look into that, that's a very, very valid question. Because it is, the building prices have escalated dramatically over the last five years. You know, we were using a number at one time of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That number is long gone, as we all know. Now you still have some original built, like land, which were something, but, you know, yeah, of the twelve million dollars, the land's worth a million now. So it's still at eleven million dollars, but we'll look into that, Walter, and we'll bring that back in next board meeting, great question. Okay, carrying on under liabilities, year-end trades, there's always trades at the end of the year, nineteen thousand dollars. The crew liability of five thousand eighty-five is the audit fee. At the end of your first year of business, you say, oh, we're all done. Oh, we have to set up a liability because we still have to do an audit after the year end. The crew last month's rent interest is money that we paid residents who have last month's rent deposits with us. There's the crew mortgage interest payable, that's this month's mortgage payment, eighteen thousand, which is why they give us their twenty-eight thousand dollar check. If the date eighteen thousand dollar check comes out, the bill comes out for the mortgage. We have this offset and shirt sheet shipped. And last month's rent, the closet of twenty-three thousand, our first mortgage is now down to one point four eight million. And that page, so our retainers, here's our profit, replacement reserves at fifty-four, and retainers are sixty-one thousand. You know, quite frankly, we're doing well under operating, the reserves are a problem. And all throughout in Ontario, when I put that presentation, I missed commenting on it. Everybody was saying we're underfunded, we're underfunded, we're underfunded. But operationally wise, we're fine, you know, we're exceptionally well, we're sixty-four thousand dollars profit. But it's just tough to, you know, to pay for all the capital repairs. Next page is our income statement. Not much to report as January for every March, first three months of the year. There's two columns in the middle, year-to-date budget, year-to-date actual. The market revenue, so these are people just market people, the budget was forty-six thousand two fifty, we brought in forty-six thousand four forty. The budget for our job, we thought we'd bring in twenty-two thousand five hundred, we brought in twenty-four thousand ninety. Simple math, we have to give that fifteen hundred dollars back within the year. Because again, I only estimated. The subsidy revenue so far was eighty-eight thousand four thirty-seven, we're at eighty-eight four thirty-four. The next line is the parking, nope, sorry, laundry, a thousand and fifty, and we're actually thirteen eighty-seven. We do charge only for a second parking spot, and that's a little bit above the interest income there. And solar revenue, now that's really low, but you have to understand that solar revenue, we have a ten thousand a year, it's a big spike. You know, the winter is snow, they're crazy, they're covered, and you got eight hours of daylight a day compared to the summer of eighteen hours. So we do expect to make our nine thousand dollars of revenue there. The first mortgages, we know exactly what that is, that's to the dollar. Total wages and benefits, we're slightly under, but we haven't had that extra pay. Every three months you get that extra pay and we haven't had it yet. Other building general, we're doing well there, the budget's eight thousand seven fifty, we're at sixty-one hundred. The internet services, we pay three hundred a month, we actually already paid for six months, which is why we're so far ahead. The elevators, budget's twelve hundred, we're at a thousand. No removal, we're okay, the budget's nine thousand, we're at fifty-four hundred, like, so, you know, we probably are gonna get it down here, like. You didn't get hit as we were very wealthy, Don and I, so we had a little bit rough for winter up there. Landscaping, I do apologize, that was the final bill that we got in January for last year, for November, they were late submitting it. So that's an accrual, that will actually be paid, you know, approved, and auditor does his year end, that gets moved back. I did look at that today, it was a six payment of the sixth, and it came, was for November, and it came in January, that's why we paid it this year. Heating and plumbing, three thousand dollars, that's primarily about two weeks ago or a month ago. We had a big pipe in the hallway that costs eighteen hundred dollars to repair, and the super sent me a picture. And like, we were lucky, they froze it to fix it, they froze it, cut it out. But it could have exploded and been one half of our problem, so eighteen hundred dollars was expensive. But it was a wonderful, you know, like he noticed it and went, wow, like that just saved us. You know, because it might have lasted another month, but it was gonna break at some point, so.
But there's more, sorry, Trevor.
Yeah.
There's more than eighteen hundred dollars in there because the budget's at seven fifty and you're at three thousand plus, so it's more than the eighteen hundred. Was there something else that blew that budget apart?
I was looking at, there's a bunch of caps and sinks we're replacing. We are struggling with the caps and sinks, that's for sure, as they age and we're turning over units.
Okay, that was twenty-eight.
I apologize, it was twenty-eight hundred dollars for that. I totally apologize, I thought it was eighteen hundred dollars, so yeah, otherwise it'd be a two hundred dollars. But it is a line that does slow them a little bit, so to speak, great question, I apologize that, I always did it this afternoon, I thought it was eighteen, I didn't. Donna's got the real numbers in front of us. The painting, the budget's six twenty-four, we haven't paid any money for painting. Waste removal, the budget's fifteen hundred dollars, we spent fourteen, and security, we're a little lower. Subsection of the budget's twenty-two nine, we're at twenty-five, which is good. Electricity, if you look at the year-to-date budget, I totally apologize, I have updated this for our next board meeting. That was just thirty-five thousand divided by twelve. I did a full analysis in good grief what happened. For the same three-month period in two thousand and fifteen, we spent nineteen thousand five hundred. Two thousand and sixteen was seventeen thousand five hundred. And two thousand and seventeen, it was twenty-one thousand dollars. And then we put in the air makeup unit, and we're at thirteen thousand dollars. So from those average numbers, we're down about eight thousand dollars in electricity. So that eighty-seven fifty, I have now gone and smoothed out the budget to put comparables, and then we'll have that better at the next board meeting to see where we're at. The next line though, natural gas and oil, it's a new air makeup unit we put in, it's boiler, you know, a new air makeup unit versus the electric. And the highest goal we had last year was nine hundred dollars. So I estimate a budget of fifteen thousand. I'm very confident we're gonna roll in this year about six or seven thousand dollars for natural gas. That was, I mean, it was a first year budget estimate that we had, so we are gonna do very, very well there. As I said, last year, it sounded the worst month was nine hundred dollars, so. And then in summer, we turned the air makeup unit off, so we should probably end up at five thousand. Wiring sewage, that's higher, because again, we pay the water bill for all the tenants, and then when they pay us, we add all these credits back. So it goes down because it's a charge, that's the charge, you know, the tenant give us a check for their portion of it. So that's why it's higher, but we are on target for our normal twenty-five thousand dollars. Municipal taxes, so there's a line, we pay municipal taxes, hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. You know, we're not a bad customer, so to speak, and the budget's twenty-seven thousand, and so far we spent twenty-three. The insurance, the budget's three thousand, we spent three, three thousand sixty-one. We do have an education allowance there, we spoke to you before, there's two thousand dollars available if anybody wanted to go to OMPA in the fall. You know, we have a two thousand dollar allowance for that. Audit and accounting fees, we haven't paid anything, I don't have a budget line for that, obviously, because there's no expected fees at this point. Bank interest charges, ten deposit interest, other maybe two thousand services, all, all pretty close to target. And when you look at that whole section, the budget's twenty-four twenty-four, we're at twenty-four thirty-three. And I know everybody's getting bored to death. Our management fees there are sixty-five hundred dollars. And then reserve funds, so I do wanna point this line out, the budget's seven nine fifty-three. If you peek to the right, we get thirty-one thousand dollars a year of funding, and the funding from Dufferin towards capital. Do you think about though, in ten years, that means they give us three hundred and ten thousand dollars? Well, we have forty-five units, it's not, like, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, like that's the roof and, you know, a bunch of appliances, like. We are really struggling with the amount of money that's provided for capital. This isn't also, this is a complaint, every non-profit in Ontario, they, we all get the same funding per dollar. Let's say, if you just look at it as a ten-year plan, that's three hundred thousand dollars over ten years. You know, it's not great. That is the end of my financial, and I will turn it over to Donna if they can accept this over.
Any questions on the financials? I'll have to put a mover in the second or two to accept the first quarter financials as presented. By Linda, seconded by Lizzie, all in favor? Carrie?
So my portion, it's about the fifth page down on the top, property management report, really placing, since the last board meeting, we've only worked on one vacant unit, which is noted in the, in the report. What work had to be done in the unit, I've been the person that resided there for four years. That unit was vacated October thirty-first, and a new resident moved in on March first. I know that that sounds like a bit of a timeline, but we had worked through the rent geared income list with the county, and a person had accepted it, and just prior to when it was supposed to move in, they backed away. So then we had to start the whole process again. Normally isn't what you could see with a timeline of turnover, you try and work on it too much to turnover.
I noticed in your report, they get out an awful lot of work that had to be done in that unit. And I, I didn't know, because you wrote down lots of drywall repair, and wallpaper, and.
Yes.
New tile carpet refurbish, kitchen, bath cabinets, and countertops for four years, is that normal?
The kitchen counter, that's just.
Really aware of territory.
Yeah.
Kitchen bath, but drywall and the rest, is that sort of like a normal, what you would do in a unit there?
We would always paint, typically paint, especially after four years. Carpet, especially in the townhouses, they have pets, so that we're looking at replacing. And maybe, but the tile was never replaced before, they moved in, it could have been already through a few tenants. And I am sorry, I should have brought that to the board school to let you know that, you know, that was existing for so many years already.
And I guess the other question I have, because I noticed in a lot of the reports going over the years, carpet, 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 carpet. Have we ever thought of putting something other than carpet in there, maybe, what do they call it?
The one thing that's actually very popular that we've been doing is the vinyl plant flooring.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it is a little more expensive, but we're.
Yeah, we are now, though, yeah.
We're starting to look at that as a new thing going forward.
Rather than kind of system carpet.
And it does look very nice, actually.
And it's maybe even a healthier scenario than carpet is, because carpet has a tendency to cause problems for, again, it's more not.
Laminating's great, but if it gets wet, it tends to damage very, very easily, it swells and.
What's that like?
Maybe replacing that, you know, just like we are carpet, with laminate.
With laminate?
Yeah.
But with the tile, you don't do that?
No, the vinyl plant is.
It's racist.
Yeah.
It looks like wood, it's fine.
And it's usually pretty durable, like, resist scratches and things like that. My concern is with the countertops, I mean, I have my countertops for sixteen years, so is it just they weren't taking great care of them? Or would they have lesser quality? Because that seems.
They're a mid-quality, but this could well be, the building's twenty-six years old, so it could be original, and so why we go now is the time.
And this is refurbished, it's not being replaced.
Right, okay.
Okay, so it's a treatment that we have replacing the counters and cabinets, you're talking about six thousand dollars from the townhouses, so. So this is a refurbishment.
And one final question, Donna, are the tenants? And one final question, Don, are the tenants, is it, are they allowed to put wallpaper up, not allowed to put wallpaper up? Like, if you're putting wallpaper up and you take it down nicely, it, it does come down, if you don't, you can make a lot of damage. So, I'm just wondering, is it a policy in place saying yea or nay?
The, the lease agreement does say not to install, and you must have permission to do, and you must hand the unit back to the condition that it's, it's, um, given to you. But, um, that doesn't always happen, and especially, you know, if it's family, and this is a three-bedroom unit, so, um, you know, family pets, and, and people will do without us knowing what they've done, because we, we go in on a, on an annual basis to do a maintenance check, or they've asked us to commit. So, we don't always see those things until after. It's not something that we can force them or, um, charge them even to do by removing it and then have to paint it back to its original condition. Because under the, um, the ten, uh, the residential tenancy act, we can only go back over, um, for rent to rears, not, not for something small, especially, um, after four years, it, it would have had to have painted again. If it was an actual damaged unit that we thought that, um, um, that it was abused, um, what we do, we move out inspection. We would catch that, and then we would probably go through damages as well. It, it was substantial, yeah.
And now it's okay, it's maybe a couple of years. If our rents have gotten better in the, in the Fort Valhosen Street, and like, you don't have people willing to do it.
Um, just if anyone, the, there was also the attachment of the work order detail, and I always present that from one meeting to the next, any contractor that has come in, what they have done, what they have charged, it's just a brief description, um, if they had any questions about that.
Any questions on that stuff? Treatment of bedbugs.
Is there a preferred contractor that uses, or does it get to?
Um, right now, most of them are, are people that have been working with the building for many, many years. And in some of the contractors, especially when we talk about flooring and things like that, that company, because they show a lot of just so many buildings. They are our preferred, and we get their good price, we have put that out before, and nobody can compete with it.
And you value their work, right?
Oh, yes, oh, definitely.
Don, I ask for an art field, a lot of times.
But it, because a lot of contractors won't even come in, because they know that you're never going to hire them after all these years, you know, that we haven't, so.
Go ahead, Steve.
So, it's like a quick question, Walter joked about it somewhat, uh, in reference to the treatment of bedbugs, is that isolated to a particular unit, or is it more widespread?
One unit.
Just one unit?
Okay.
That's a good thing.
Yes, it is. It can be a. But we do, we do check, so if it's here, we check above, below, sorry about that, yeah, we always make sure, and then we go back, cut them out, weeks later, we do.
If I can, a follow-up on Steve's question, do we call in, uh, right, like, certain times of the year, pest control? Because that's more than just bedbugs, it's all kinds of.
We have, um, a company that comes in once a month and goes through the common areas of the building, uh, and, and checks all common areas, and that's just a monthly check, um, for any rodents or bugs or, you know. But not specifically two units, but, yeah.
I'm sure if there was something, we'd get a complaint, right? People would call you right away.
Prefer that, yeah.
Yes, yes.
All right, the motion received, the property management report, moved by Kyle, seconded by Walter, all in favor? Any new business?
One very quick item, the auditor has mentioned that, um, because he's doing the audit, that you need to appoint officially, legally, the directors, the president, vice president, secretary of treasurer for this corporation, introducing a sort of de facto, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and whoever would want to be the secretary of treasurer. But there are legal positions here that he needs to record for their, the corporate annual corporate return.
Okay, so motions to those.
I'm the secretary of treasurer, right, for a while, so I may as well continue now, because it's usually the mayor that's the, uh, president, uh, deputy mayor, the vice president, and also the secretary of treasurer.
I'll side with that motion, Kyle, any discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, so the date for next meeting?
We're looking at, the audit is complete, like, substantially complete, um, we're looking either May sixth or thirteenth, at first, those two Mondays, wherever your availability is.
You want, you want twenty-OP meter here, so.
Oh, gee.
It's hot.
Thirteenth or twentieth of May, isn't it?
Should we take the thirteenth then? Now, I'm still like.
All right, the thirteenth. And is the auditor, auditor coming on later?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's it, I'll look for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Moved by Steve, seconded by Linda, all in favor? Thanks, guys. All right, so we'll call the regular council meeting to order, are there any disclosures of career or interests, somebody remember? All right, so we have a motion on the agenda, will be resolved, will be approved, the events from the regular council meeting, held on March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, as presented and circulated. Mover and seconder for that, please, moved by Councilor Wagner, seconded by Councilor Hall, any discussion, all in favor? All right, so public question period.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can I just be seated for a minute? Just asking the name and address.
My name is Len Mikulich, I live at one oh five Carolyn Street, Shelburne, Ontario, L nine V three C two.
Sure, just to remind you that this is not a deputation, this is a question period.
Correct, I have questions to ask, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm here to talk about your motion that's being proposed later this evening. I'd like to ask a question of your CAO with respects to the resolution, uh, that you propose to pass, uh, to your CAO, please explain in detail why there is a three-million-dollar limit that could be used for a renovation to the current police station or for a new building.
In fairness to the CAO, it is my notice of motion, so, so I'll, I'll answer the question.
Thank you.
And, and it will be addressed later on at the appropriate time in the meeting. Uh, three million dollars, in short, is a number that, that I think, um, and this will be up for discussion, obviously, when, when the motion's on the, on the floor. Uh, but, but it's a number that I think is appropriate and within our, our means to afford. What, what had happened in the past, and, and you'll see the, the motion speaks to this, we're asking for staff to review all prior accommodation studies and report back, so that this new council has a summary of those findings. And then within that, council at that point will determine whether or not the renovation slash expansion option can address any of the adequacy concerns for somewhere in the range of three million dollars. What had happened before, and I alluded to this briefly last Wednesday night, that there were two different iterations of police accommodations subcommittees that had been struck last term, I chaired the first subcommittee. The approach that was taken at that point in time, uh, in, in the case of both subcommittees, was that the committee looked at what possible accommodation options there were, you know, in, in terms of a renovation expansion, in terms of a new build, and in terms of finding an existing building somewhere in town that could be retrofitted, you know, to, to meet, meet requirements. At, at no point did that committee start with a budget number in mind. So, in some ways, that's like going to a car lot and naming off the various options you want, and then finding out at the end what the price tag is. The purpose of this notice of motion, again, which will be voted on later tonight, is to sort of turn that process on its head. So, instead of starting with a wish list, let's start with a budget in mind that we, you know, think we might reasonably be able to afford, and then let's see what can fit within that budget. Does that answer your question?
Um, thank you for that information, uh, it's informa, it's interesting, but I did have a further question that would ask the CAO, but if you're going to answer it, that would be great. Could council proceed beyond the three-million-dollar limit, especially when the FIRs from the province allows municipalities that they can do so? Could you answer that, Mr. Mayor?
It'll be a council decision, the notice of motion speaks to three million dollars.
But it's not my question, you know, asking about the FIRIs, and if you're allowed to do it, can you do it?
I guess we're allowed to do whatever we want.
You can, because the province has guidelines, and I want to ask the, thank you for your response, if there's no response from the CAO, I'm not trapped there on the spot, and I thank you for your response.
Sure, if you want.
Well, me and myself are the treasurer, and I think through the budget process, we, we articulated this fairly succinctly. And I think the analogy that the mayor has used is a credit card. The capacity to borrow doesn't mean that you will borrow that much. So, while we can borrow more, do we want to borrow that much? The reason that we provide the guideline is to ensure that the sustainability and protection of this corporation's in place. Remembering what the county has done. I think another great analogy is that you borrow to your maximum, and you have an emergency, just like your home, and you can't pay for that option. We are struck. So, we believe that similar to a credit card, there's a responsible level of borrowing. So, we've also itemized through the budget process for two nineteen, that in addition to this potential project, we have significant other capital investment projects, one of which is before council tonight, because we did not get our OCI to top up. There are significant water and wastewater infrastructure projects and other borrowing impacts. And we currently have over seven projects on our capital schedule list, all of which have between seven and fifteen-year terms remaining on them. So, we've emphasized myself as the treasurer that we have a debt challenge before us, and it will only get worse. So, we believe being conservative and responsible is a fundamental, um, important strategy for this council and this corporation to embrace.
So, so, in response, just briefly, and I won't keep you, but in terms of what I understood, you, the question is, can you go above three million dollars? And the answer is likely a yes, but you have to give something else up, is that correct, under the capital debt?
As I mentioned the other night, my, you know, council unfortunately doesn't have the luxury of looking at any particular item in isolation. So, you know, again, to use the credit card analogy, um, you know, if, if the only thing we had to concern ourselves with was police accommodations, then sure, we, we could borrow it to our limit.
Good, that's what I wanted to know.
But the problem is, we don't, we don't have that luxury.
But you can.
We have other expenditures that we know are coming down, down the pipe, that we have to plan for. So, I think it would be entirely irresponsible, even though we're permitted, you know, legislatively to do so. It would be entirely irresponsible to max out our borrowing capacity with one project, when we know that we're going to have to access that borrowed money for other projects. So, it's, so, again, to, to double up on my analogies, it would be like going to a car lot, maxing out your credit card to buy a fancy car, when you know you have much-needed house repairs coming in the next month, that you're gonna have to use that credit for. So, there, there's a difference between what you can do and what you should do if, if you're acting responsibly.
I, I respect that, and I understand that if you have other options, rather than going to debt, you can still borrow from yourselves and pay for it, and it'll be still cheaper.
And raise it through tax writing.
Yeah, now, my other question, I know that this is a very important, uh, you could be.
This will be the last question.
Absolutely, I'm going to move it. Um, if council is honest and truly will be discussing the options, as you've said, Mr. Mayor, then council should know that the public, I've heard many people in the public are seeking your analysis and reasons on why you have not accepted all the options for the implementation of a new police facility, for example, using town-owned lands, which could be a net zero to the taxpayers and municipality, a retrofit renovations, an extension of the curricula, uh, Shelburne Police Bureau.
I have to stop there, because I have to reject the premise of this question.
Well, the premise, my area is, is are you, are you, have you listed all of the, uh, options that are listed? The public doesn't know them.
And that's exactly why, in my notice of motion, I've asked staff to summarize the results.
Isn't it important how orders serve to deal with it by identifying them in there, that these are the options? How do we know that they all are?
And that's, and that's the notice of motion request.
I appreciate that, but it doesn't supersite all of them, that's my message. However, given that.
I think it's pretty inclusive, it talks about all accommodation reviews, I'm not sure how much more inclusive you can be.
Well, all inclusive, how do we know we've done all inclusive? We, that's not fair, given that council will be making your decision on Monday, and I'm coming to the question in a while back. Given that the council will be making your decision on June, Monday, June the twenty-fourth, to accept, either accept or receive the OPP costing, I would respectfully ask council if they would publicly declare on public record their position on each of the options, and given that council has only twelve weeks to go, or eighty-four days, to do all the intended analysis and discussions before you make your decisions final, and I do hope and pray that that exercise will warrant merit and will be seriously considered, because if council resolves to accept the OPP costing without all the options being considered, then it would appear that you've made your decision before the investigation on all the options.
So, is there a question there?
Yes, is, I would respectfully ask council if they would publicly declare on public record their position on each of the options, which I was reciting, and you said there aren't way many options that the staff would create for you, for the council, and that's basically it, would they declare publicly?
So, there, there were three options highlighted in the Walter Fenny report, as you'll likely recall, you, you chaired the service report.
Well, it was my underwriting, that's right.
Yeah, so, so those three options, again, were a new build, an expansion and renovation of this facility, or three, the identification of another building, even though it didn't identify one in particular, and retrofit to suit our needs. So, those three options were dealt with in a, in a great amount of detail by both of those combination subcommittees. And that's what my notice of motion speaks to, it, it asks staff to review all of that information. Let's bring those findings back onto the table, so that this council has, has a chance to sort of see, you know, what the summary of, of those findings were. And then in particular, I've asked that we, we look a little deeper at the renovation and expansion option, to see if we can bring that in line, uh, at a number that we can afford.
As well as other options like the amalgamations, like the.
An amalgamation with whom?
Amalgamation of police services, we were talking about that with surrounding services, that was another option.
With who? With Orangeville, as you know, is in the middle of OPP costing right now, too.
I understand that, and I'm just saying, if you, if you, if I follow your logic, you asked them to do that, and thank you for telling me that, but I think you've gotta say, I'm saying tonight, you gotta look at all of them before you make a decision, and if you make the decision and it comes after you've done this, 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 and this, and you do make that decision, I think you've done your due diligence, I thank you.
I think, I think this council has been very clear from day one that our intention is to look at the options. So, we could have closed the door on some of them, but again, I'm asking in my notice of motion tonight to open that up again, to take another closer look.
And with all those options, yeah.
With, with the new council as well, because in fairness, quite a few members around this table have not had a chance to look at that.
I understand, and that's why I'm bringing this to your attention, that if they could declare their positions, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Whether it's put forward as a motion or not, I guess that'll be up to each individual counselor, if they wanna make a notice of motion, but I, I, I guess ultimately, council will make a decision at some point prior to July fifteenth.
So, that if it, when your notice of motion comes to the table for consideration of this assembly, then if they wanna make an amendment to, to include any of those to be more specific, then you, as a council, will decide if not. Your motion stands as written, and, uh, now, when you have that report, uh, will you be making that available to the public? And having any public meetings?
All, all meetings are public.
No, with regards to any report, because I understand you have consultants, uh, being, doing some work.
That was highlighted at the meeting last night, as they keep June, June, their consultant is presenting its findings.
Yeah, so that would be a public, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, question period, Alex?
Hi there, Alex McClellan for the Shelburne Freelancer. Um, I approached Jim Moss with some questions regarding winter statistics, how much sand was used, you know, like an article about winter and the cost to the town. He said to me that he referred to our CAO, so my question is to Denise, why you chose to defer those questions to a, a double story that I was going to do and put it into one story, which would have been, well, by your estimation, you wanted to lump spring cleanup into winter cleanup for the statistics? And I was hoping to do two different stories, so I was just wondering why you chose that route.
And through the mayor, I provided you with a very comprehensive email outlining what we were doing with respect to those projects.
I don't believe I received that email.
I can resend it to you.
I would appreciate that.
I will.
Um, just for the record, though, is there a reason?
So, what we outlined in the report is that when you. So what we outlined in the report is that when you met up with the summary of winter control, and we actually said in my email that winter control wasn't over, that we have that unexpected storm, that we also outlined that we were planning to provide a winter control month-end, year-end report to council. I gave you the dates in the email that was expected at the end of May. I provided you some information that was currently underway for sidewalk planning and gave you the data under which this report from staff, which includes a significant amount of data that we compiled for the first time that we presented first to council. That's what I provided.
So there's no such thing as a "to this date"?
No, because Jim didn't have the data to provide to you, so he turned it to me to provide you with the answer. So I'll certainly find you the email because I copied my colleagues on that response as well.
Thank you very much.
Martin?
You answered a lot of what I had questions on your motion regarding police services, but I just want to clarify the wording that you used in print is not clearly what you're saying. So I just want to read it to you so we can be clear on what you're intending. It says, jumping to the middle, "Be it further resolved that the staff could provide a summary of this information, whether the police services accommodation adequately concerned could be satisfactorily addressed through a renovation and expansion of the current facility at a cost not exceeding $3 million." So you were explaining that it was going to encompass some of the other options?
So the first part of that notice of motion speaks to a review of all previous accommodation work? And then ask staff to provide a summary?
Okay, as long as that's what's going to happen. The way I read it is...
Just bear with me for a second.
...to the renovation and expansion of the current facility.
So the first section says, and we'll get to this later in the agenda, it said, "Be it resolved that council requests staff to review all former space planning considerations."
Okay.
So that, that is the intent there, that the three options that have been looked at by the other subcommittees will be reviewed and then summarized? And in fairness, the second portion there, I think there are two words missing, but the second portion is for staff to provide a summary of that information, and it should read there, "to determine whether..."
Okay.
"...that the accommodation needs can be satisfied through this option."
Right, thank you. And then the not exceeding $3 million is a bit concerning because we know for some of the other considerations that they've been priced higher than that.
At that point, and to my point to end, the approach taken by the subcommittees was essentially, let's list, you know, all of the things that we want without a price tag in mind. So what I'm asking for is sort of, you know, reverse logic. Let's start with a price in mind that we know, you know, we can responsibly afford, and then let's see what we can actually achieve within that budgetary constraint.
Okay, so I just hope that the council does not... If it comes in at 3.3, then they're not going to look at it. And then just, I'm trying to get my head around this whole budget thing and your analogy of the car lot. So when you go to buy a car and you're buying a Chevy or you're buying a Ford or you're buying... You have the spec sheets and you've got all those things in a row. Are we going to be able to see some of those? So the police services currently are doing all these services and the OPP will do this many with an Exxon some of them and a Astra on some of them. Can we see that?
I think probably what you'll find in the consultant's report is a fairly comprehensive analysis when it comes to a comparison of the service delivery, and that's specifically one of the things we had asked for. We didn't commission this consultant to just do a financial analysis. We also specifically asked him to run through the service delivery model so that he can compare, you know, for the benefit of council and the public to know what service we have currently under Shelburne Police Service as compared to what service we potentially would have with OPP.
Okay, thank you. And what the issue is, if we do go for the OPP, we're going to have a portion of the building that is not going to be used. Is there anything being published or discussed publicly about the budget that's going to be taken to renovate that into uses that may be... That are used for a larger council meeting room or such and such? That like, there's going to be costs involved in that. Is that being put in part of the budget that's going to be... To change from our current police to the OPP? That's going to be a cost as well.
Sure, and I think that's premature. So I mean, if we were to decide as a council on July 15th or sometime prior there to make a switch to OPP, that's not something that happens overnight. So through that transition process, I suspect that would be a more appropriate time to determine what use would be made of that building. But I mean, that's nowhere near where we are at this point in our decision.
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, we all have our own business, but managing buildings, that I do, I... You have to manage your monies that way because if you take over that part of the building, it's no longer going to be in the police service budget. It's now going to be in an administrative budget. So we need to have that consideration.
The building portion is actually in our administrative budget right now.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
That's good, thank you.
Do I get to sell downstairs?
A sell?
Yeah, I thought you were going to get a cell downstairs. Especially if I keep talking to people like you be put down there.
Are there any other questions for question period? All right, so we'll close question period and move on to presentation. So the first presentation is a proclamation for autism awareness money. Councillor Fegan and I attended the Harts Light Open Autism Awareness Event on Saturday night at the golf club. It's now the fourth annual event organized primarily by Dina Havison, with I think a great deal of help from Megan Young and some other volunteers at the golf course. This is, you know, I sort of joked with Dina that this, you know, at year four, I think almost turns into institution status in town. She's done a great job and really moved that event along and has raised a significant amount of money for local schools in the process. So Councillor Fegan and I made the proclamation officially Saturday night, but we thought it was probably appropriate to do it formally at a council meeting as well. So if you bear with me, I'll just read through the proclamation. "Whereas autism is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social, communication, and behavioral skills of those affected by it; and whereas more health professionals are becoming more proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as 1 in 68 children nationally. And whereas, while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive early and intensive treatment throughout their lives, they lead significantly improved lives. And whereas, individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety and to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism can present. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Wade Mills, on behalf of the council of the town of Shelburne, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2019, as Autism Awareness Day in the town of Shelburne, and urge all residents to participate in autism awareness activities in order to become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism." So there we have it, it's official. Okay, so the next presentation is from BDO with our 2018 audited financial statements. I think we have Sally Slumsky and Angela Nichol. Just the two of you or...
Sort of, sort of. We're fine.
Take turns.
And actually, some of the people might have three of us this evening. I'm Sally Slumsky. I've been the audit partner for a number of years on the town of Shelburne's audit, but I sort of haven't met me before. With me is Angela Nichol. Angela is one of our managers and she has also worked with the town of Shelburne for several years. And then also with us this evening is Tracy Smith. Tracy is actually my successor because I will be retiring this year. And Tracy brings a wealth of municipal knowledge and experience and a little bit of a fresh perspective, I think, too. So going forward, Tracy and Angela will be working together, hopefully not reaching out to me too often as I move on into retirement. So thank you for the opportunity to present those statements this evening. We have, and as you have in your packages, we have... We'll start out with some financial highlights, and it's really pulling some highlights from your financial statements, both the current year as well as some historical information, just the status and key findings. And then you also have the audited, the draft audited financial statements in your packages as well. We won't specifically go to the financial statements in the interest of time, but certainly be very happy to address any questions that you might have at that point in the statements themselves. So Angela will start out with the financial piece. I will briefly touch on our report to council and then monitor any questions you may have.
So a quick outline, so we're going to go through the local boards and then the kind of high-level financial statement element, including the statement of financial position, statement of operations, statement of net financial assets, cash flows, accumulated surplus note, and then the highlights. So the local boards, so the financial statements are prepared on a consolidated basis. So this means that the assets, liabilities, revenues, and expenses of the Shelburne Library, CBRC, and the VIA are included in the financial statements as well as a proportion of the assets, liabilities, revenue expenses of the fire board. There was a review engagement prepared for the library, fire board, and CBRC, and a notice to reader statement was prepared for the VIA. As the local boards are consolidated, we do do some additional audit tests on any material balances of the boards.
So, excuse me, I can answer your question. Because the board's fire board in particular has its own auditorium, because it was the audit, do you audit again on top of that?
So the fire board actually has a review engagement that would audit.
But an auditor does a review engagement. It's not a full...
It's not the same...
It's not a full...
Level, yeah, I'm sure.
But you audit, you do audit it. So I guess is the question I'm asking.
We would only look at any material balances to Shelburne.
Sort of review again.
Not everything in the same amount of detail as the fire board would.
I just face a question sometimes, duplication, consultation.
And I guess too, because when we're reporting on the town of Shelburne, we're reporting on consolidation, consolidated entities as a whole, so we're not drilling down probably as much as if you were, if a separate audit were being done on the fire board as those auditors do. It's, it is, I mean, you can't help but avoid some level of duplication, I think, just by the nature of council has different needs and objectives in reviewing statements than those members of the fire board might, for example.
Yeah, and I understand that. It's just that, as you said, you can't help some duplication happening. It's almost wanting to make the recommendation of the same auditor rather than, and that way it's done without the duplication. It's just something in my mind, sorry.
The only problem with that, Walter, is the fire board has five municipalities and not all of them use this new auditor.
No, the fire board itself can use.
I know. But if the fire board changes their auditor to match ours, then it may not match the other municipalities. All of the books are consolidated into each municipality.
I understand that.
So the statement of financial position, so this statement provides a snapshot of the municipality at a point of time. It kind of highlights a few of the following. So the cash resources of the municipality. The net financial asset position. And so this is kind of a calculation of your net financial assets less your liabilities. So this balance is positive. It means that the municipality, if they collected all of their assets and paid all of their debts, there would be money left over to kind of fund some future finances. The non-financial assets are items such as the tangible capital assets, prepaids, and inventory. And so, if you could flip to the next slide. So this is your statement of financial position as of December 31st, 2018. So just a few highlights. So the increase in cash is due to cash from operations of about $3.5 million. This was partially offset by $1.7 million spent in capital additions and $410,000 on principal repayments of your long-term debt. The decrease in trade and other receivables is due to a decrease in one-time capital funding from the prior year due to the water tower. And the liabilities, so under there you have deferred revenue, which is any unspent development charges and gas tax funding. So this has decreased compared to the prior year, and that's due to an increase in the amount of development charges spent during the year. Also on that is a decrease in long-term debt due to the principal repayments during the year. This leaves, sorry, a net financial asset has increased compared to the prior year. And this is due to mainly the financial assets, so the cash and the decrease in the deferred revenue and the long-term debt. At the bottom, so you'll see an increase also in your net tangible capital assets. This is reflected by additions of the $2.42 million, including $2.5 million of contributed assets less amortization of the $2.4 million.
$2 million.
The statement of operations and accumulated surplus. So this reports the revenue, all of the revenue that the municipality has and including taxes, user fees for any of the various services, grants, other income. And so also reports the expenses, so payroll expenses, supplies, services, interest, and of course amortization of your capital assets. Amortization is just an estimate of the rent tear on assets from their use every year. So when you take the total revenue less the total expenses for the year, you get your annual surplus. So this annual surplus includes changes in capital assets, reserves, reserve funds, as well as your operating surplus. So it's not just an operating surplus that you guys would see in the budgets. It's very, very different. So the statement of operations and accumulated surplus, so just a couple of highlights. You'll see that there is three columns here. The first column being the budget for 2018, the second column being the actuals for 2018, and the third column being your actuals for 2017 fiscal year. So some of the larger components of these end-user charges are water and sewer, ice frontals. So the increase pretty much in user fees is due to an increase in water and sewer rates of about $200,000 compared to the prior year. As well, grants have decreased from the prior year mainly due to a decrease in capital grants. In the prior year, you guys received capital grants for a water treatment plant as well as the pole barn. So that kind of has decreased the grants compared to the prior year. Other revenue also includes development charges earned, penalties, interest on taxation, rents, and any contributing capital assets. So this has actually increased from the prior year due to an increase in the development charges recognized of about $400,000 and about $200,000 for the development piece for one of the parks that were recognized during the year. You'll see overall expenses are under budget in total, so that's always a positive thing. So this leaves you with an annual surplus of the almost $3.7 million reported under PSAP basis. So remember, very, very different than your operating surplus that you will see. Third statement is the statement of changes in net financial assets. So this takes the annual surplus for the year and removes any items related to non-financial assets. So capital assets, any changes in prepaids. So if you want to flip to the statement of changes in net financial assets. So just a couple of things to highlight. So during the year, over $4.1 million was acquired in... So during the year, over four point one million dollars was acquired in capital assets. This included two point five million dollars in contributed assets. There's about two four, four million dollars in amortization taken during the year. And a decrease in net financial assets of almost one point nine million dollars compared to the prior year, leaving the two point six million dollar balance in net financial assets at the end of the year. And the statement of cash flow is the fourth and final statement that we will look at tonight. So this shows the activity in cash and cash equivalents for the year. It takes opening cash balances and adjusts for any activity and shows the final balance. The cash flow is actually broken down into four different types of cash activities. So operating, for day-to-day operations of the municipality. Capital for the purchase and sale of capital assets. Investing for any of the investments the municipality holds. And finally, financing, any loans the municipality has, both additions and any repaid free payments of long-term debt. So the statement of cash flow, just a couple of highlights there. Cash from operations was approximately three point five million dollars. The next section is your capital acquisitions, so there's about one point, almost one point seven million dollars invested in capital infrastructure during the year. Your financing activities, so there was repayments of long-term debt of the four hundred and ten thousand dollars, leaving you with an overall increase in cash flow of over one point four million dollars. So just a one of the notes, so the accumulated surplus note provides a breakdown of the accumulated surplus balance that you find on both the statement of financial position and the statement of operations and accumulated surplus. Some just keynotes, so it kind of breaks down the accumulated surplus into those pieces. So a few of those are the invested amount of capital assets. So this is pretty much the amount that you've invested in capital assets cumulatively, so year over year. The capital assets to be financed in the future, so this is the amount to invest in capital assets that still need to be financed through taxes, long-term debt, or other sources of financing. General surplus, if there was one, kind of shows the operating surplus deficit. And the unfunded solid waste and post-closure costs, so these are amounts that are unfunded currently and will need to be financed in the future. So the accumulated surplus note, just a few highlights. So there is total amount invested in capital assets, is the sixty one point four million dollars. You have two unfunded liabilities, one for the landfill post-closure and the other one for the police post-employment benefits. So reserves and reserve funds have increased to about one point four million dollars from the prior year.
Okay, just a quick question. Can you go back up to the CBRC? That is a differential, is that what the board voted and you were paying? I don't understand that number.
That is the operating surplus for CBRC.
Operating surplus or deficit?
Surplus. Surplus, sorry, the numbers are really small.
They have the surplus.
A reminder that this is PSAV accounting, though not cash basis.
Okay.
So capital assets under PSAV get capitalized versus in your budget process, they would have been a cash expenditure. And then amortization wouldn't be part of the cash-based budget for CBRC. So I think that's, that would be what.
You totally confused that. I thought I was getting it there for a second. Okay, maybe I'll wait for another day.
It's different from cash, it's different from the cash requirement.
It's different from cash requirements, so the hundred forty seven thousand is PSAV, but I don't get the, it's not much of a PISA there, I figured Billy's worth a little more than that.
So I think you have to go back and look at CBRC's actual operating budget.
Yeah, I think so too.
Compared to actual year-end versus budget.
I think I'd need to see that because I need to know where that hundred forty seven thousand came from.
I'm remembering that's a cumulative, so it's a cumulative number, so it's not just this year's surplus or whatever that is, so.
Someday, I'm gonna give you my card and you can tell me how. I don't want to get lost anymore in the process.
And just a note, so during the year, the operating surplus of five hundred and eight thousand dollars was transferred into reserves. So hopefully these help you a little bit more. So these are a couple of highlights of the financial performance for the last five years. So the first one is long-term debt, so you'll see that long-term debt increased in two thousand and sixteen with two new loans, one for the new well and the other one for the Sister Street project. But otherwise, the other four years all decreased due to sub-repayments of the long-term debt that's required. The next one is your reserves and discretionary reserve fund balances. So you'll see here that they have been mainly increasing over the past five years with an increase in water and sewer reserve contributions. In two thousand and sixteen, you saw a decrease in water and sewer reserves to help fund the capital spending that went on during the year. So the next one is your obligatory reserve fund balances. So these have increased pretty steadily from two thousand for the past five years, relating to an increase in development charges from mostly the new subdivisions. This current year, you did see a decrease in the development charges as about six hundred and four thousand dollars was spent on capital projects. The next one compares the revenue sources from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen. So you'll see that they pretty much remained relatively consistent between the two years. There has been, of course, a growth in the overall revenue. Two things to note, so grants have decreased from sixteen percent in two thousand and fourteen to only eight in the current year. And other revenue has increased from nine percent in two thousand and fourteen to twenty four in the current year, likely mostly due to the contribution of your tangible capital assets from the subdivisions that were assumed during the year. The next one is the operating grants. So there was a one-time kind of operating grant received in the current year. That has increased in for two thousand and eighteen, but you'll see pretty much over the past four years that it has been decreasing as you see those decreases in the OMPF grant. Capital grants, so you'll see the significant capital projects in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen for the new water and sewer projects, you guys did receive some capital grants for that. But otherwise, the capital grants are relatively low.
Can I ask another question? When you have other municipalities' recreation, is that when other municipalities contribute to recreation? And you're calling that a grant?
That would be funding sources for other municipalities, yes.
Because you got it under capital grants and it's funding sources, and I'm not sure that the other municipalities would treat that as a grant. And that's why I sort of questioned that.
Can't think of what that was, unfortunately it was a few years ago.
I don't think it would be regular.
It wouldn't be regular.
Like financial contributions, because I mean, it's not showing up.
No.
In two thousand and eighteen, so.
No, it's not in two thousand and eighteen. It's way back.
A special project or something?
I'm wondering if that was a grant for the extension on the fire hall and the addition to the CBRC. And they're calling that a grant.
That was prior to that.
Prior even to that? I don't know how we got those grants from the municipalities.
But I'm not sure that that's actually showing up on any of those.
No, but if they're willing to give us grants, I'm going to.
I actually don't know if I see any.
I don't think it's showing up.
And if it is, it's very, very small. A big blue bar is the water and sewer grants from Canada.
No, because on the operating grants, I saw other municipalities under, again, on the other ones, so I was just trying to figure it out.
That one will be the contributions that the other municipalities make to.
To the, to the arena and whatnot?
Yeah, fire and all of those ones, but yeah.
And those are, you're listing them as operating grants?
The capital expenditures is the next one, so kind of ties in very well with the capital grants. You'll see very large capital expenditures in fifteen and sixteen, mainly due to the new well and the Sister Street project. So your expenses, so this kind of breaks down here the municipality's money spend. Highest cost municipality is the police with twenty four percent of the total expenses. Water and sewer is the next biggest cost with about twenty two percent, followed by roads and general government, both at fourteen percent. The next one shows just the type of the expenses, both again from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen. So the type of expenses have not changed significantly between the last two years. And finally, just a five-year financial position. So you'll see that reserves have been increasing steadily, and there has been an increase in cash available for current use. So this kind of is shown in the municipality kind of over the last five years as they build up reserves and reserve funds, but also have to deal with repayment of long-term debt and future capital expenditure requirements, so. So any questions with just the presentation before Sally goes next to the letter?
So the report to council. Will sign the management representation letter. The audit findings, nothing really changed too much from our planning report. We look at the control environment, some of the areas of risk are revenue recognition, cash revenues in particular, grant revenue, which is really more of a timing of revenue recognition, landfill post-closure, which is subject to estimate, capital assets and amortization, and amortization is also subject to estimate, as well as post-employment benefit liabilities. And your post-employment benefit liability is actually an actuary calculation that is not to determine that. The, we did not, no control deficiencies were noted during the course of our audit that are, that we felt we needed to bring to governance. Independence, we just confirmed that we are independent of the Town of Shelburne. Included in the appendix B, you will have seen adjusted and unadjusted differences. The only unadjusted difference related to tax write-offs, and it's really just an estimate which is based upon tax appeals that may be in process. And so really, it's just a difference in estimate, so it's not a difference to be concerned with. The adjusted differences were, all of the adjusted differences were adjustments provided by management to us. So they were adjustments that just were made, needed to be made to the trial balance subsequent to the day that we commenced the audit. So again, nothing of concern there. Fraud discussion, just a reminder to council that it's actually a shared responsibility between council management and the auditors to bring any concerns about fraud to our attention. And so again, it's just a reminder that all of us stay apart in that oversight. An audit isn't specifically designed to detect fraud. Audit findings, I won't really go through all of them, it really just highlights where we identify risks, most of which are very common to all municipalities which we, which we audit. And it just notes sort of the audit work that we do to address that. One of them certainly that we have across the board is there's always a risk of management override in any entity. And so we do, we journal entries on the unusual transactions specifically to kind of safeguard against that. And again, I think I touched on internal control matters. We do document and review internal control assistance card in the audit, and no control efficiencies were noted that we thought were significant of significant importance to discuss with council. And we will on an annual basis, any recommendations that we may have, we will bring to management's attention. And they may be just, they may not necessarily have to do with internal controls. Sometimes it's based upon suggestions that we, things that we see other municipalities doing as well. So that kind of concludes our report. I do want to take the opportunity to thank Carrie and the Town of Shelburne staff. They, when we arrive for the audit, they're always very well-prepared and that makes our job much easier. And I think for members of council, that is what your expectation should be as well. So thank you to the finance department for the work that you do throughout the year.
Are there any questions for Sally or Angela?
If not, if a motion be resolved, the council receives the two thousand and eighteen audited financial statements as presented and circulated. As for a second or for that, by Counselor Buffett, seconded by Counselor Peaking. In favor, here, thanks, guys. All right, so next presentation is Nicole Jeffrey, talking about Black History Month program.
Good evening, members of council, Mayor Mills and Deputy Sergeant Anderson and members of the public. Just here on behalf of Faith Believers Church Fellowship Church, just to speak a little bit about cross-coal partnership between the Town of Shelburne and ourselves in including Black History Month as an ongoing celebration yearly. If you go to the next slide, as you can see here, the Faith Believer Fellowship is a sister church of North Peel Community Church, which is located in Callaghan. It's been there for decades and we've been celebrating Black History Month with our youth in that church for over ten years now. We have been blessed to partner with the town this year, Callaghan, and we've been able to promote various initiatives, including our Black History Month. So Faith Believer is proposing a fellowship very similar to the one we have in Callaghan right now that we can continue with these celebrations. So it is important to recognize that Black history as being the community's history. We are very grateful and thankful that Shelburne's council showed support for Black history by issuing the proclamation for two thousand and nineteen celebration. And we also had Counselor Wedner, who also did a wonderful display recognizing the various individuals in Deafland County for Black History Month. Black History Month is an opportunity for us as a people to tell stories, increase general community awareness. We also look back on the Trailblazers, and this is dear to my heart, and motivate the youth. I'm currently a youth leader at our church, and we have a lot of opportunity with the youth where they can get very engaged with the Black History celebration. And we would like to continue that within the community so that they can be successful and that the failure, that failure is not an option. We celebrate the current accomplishments and plot the future that will see our youth as leaders. Um, we celebrate the current accomplishments and plot the future that will see our youth as leaders to carry our, our great countr, country forward. Uh, if you just move to the next slide, so this is just talking a little bit about, um, our theme this year. Um, every year when we do our Black History Month celebration, we have a specific theme. Uh, the young people, the youth get involved in, um, deciding on a theme that they would like to look at. And the one that we had decided on is, um, focusing more on Canadian, um, individuals that have contribute to, um, this country. So we partnered this year with the Town of Callaghan, celebrating the national theme. So the national, national theme for Black History Month was Black Canadian Youth, Boundless, Rooted and Proud. Now, if you go to the next slide, you'll have an opportunity to see some of the work that we did. Um, our celebrations happen in the month of February, every Friday. So every Friday, we had a different event. Um, what you see on the screen right now is the display that we had at the Town of Callaghan. Um, so we had, um, members from, um, the community provided us with different artifacts that we were able to put in the display. Um, we also had county regional police supporting us, we had Shelburne's firefighters come and support us as well, too. And then, of course, in our grand finale, we have an opportunity where we share different, uh, and various foods that, um, the community can come and take part of. Um, it just talked a little bit about a youth success, um, that has, um, definitely shown with us. Um, during the Black History Month, we noticed their success. Um, we have seen the success in the, in the development of our youth. Um, they are actively engaged in our community, as you can see in some of the pictures. A member of our youth group was employed as a page in the House of Commons. And right now, she's a proceeding verification officer there. Um, our youth spend time doing research and sharing the knowledge gained with each other. And they assume leadership positions and continuously demonstrate growth. Um, so at the top left, you can see the Tom Egan Award. Dorian Jeffrey Jones, down towards the bottom, we have Aleah Davis, uh, who's a member of the Black Chapter Group. And then, um, in the center there, the, um, our youth that was a member, Janelle Senior of a page in the House of Commons. So the opportunities that we really want to focus on is the federal and the provincial governments have both expressed that there are challenges specifically for Black residents of Canada. Um, steps are being taken to address these issues and it is important for us to show leadership and addressing the challenges at a local level. The Town of Shelburne proclamation highlights the decade for the people of the African descent as identified by the United Nations. And our partnership will build upon that proclamation. Uh, we can see here in the Town of Shelburne, it's very diverse. And, um, I want to stress that we want all youth, uh, regardless of, we want to make it very inclusive. So regardless of your race, whatever it is, we do really feel, um, this is dear to our hearts, that they will all benefit. So just a little bit about Deafert County Black history. Um, we had an opportunity through the display just to read some of this already, so we had George, George Hannison. Um, he was the first Black settler in the county, county of William, and Mary Gag. Um, they were family-owned, uh, more than three hundred acres of farmland, um, producing various things, including oats, peas and barley. Um, we have Mary Taylor, so she was more on Gray County side. Um, but it just, a lot of the Black settlers that came through, they came through from Gray County. Um, so in Owen Sound, she always carried a basket full of apples, oranges, sweets. Um, later she opened an Erie in the market square of Owen Sound. And then we have Steve Anderson, um, Shelburne's first Black deputy mayor. So moving forward, um, again, I just want to thank, um, each and every one of you for this opportunity to come before you and speak tonight. Um, we know that Black History Month is gone for two thousand and nineteen, but we are looking just to, um, start planning and partnering, partnering with the Town of Shelburne for two thousand and twenty. And so on and so forth. Um, we look forward to growing in our community and adding value and moving forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Nicole?
Thanks Nicole for, for doing this presentation and I certainly welcome the, uh, the partnership. My question for you is, uh, what, what steps will be taken to involve the schools? There's been some individuals that have, that have approached me and have indicated that, um, some of the programming has been lacking in the schools. Um, and, uh, um, there's, there's help that is needed, and I won't get into a lot of details for the purposes of, of tonight. Just wanted to see if, um, you'd be taking steps to engage the school during-
Oh, definitely, definitely. Um, again, my focus are, is, is the youth. So I definitely would want the youth to be involved and I would definitely go to the school and see how we can definitely, um, help in, um, making plans. Like I said, um, normally when I plan the, when we do it as a church and we plan the celebrations for Black history. We normally pick a day, which is normally Fridays, and every Friday we do a different function. So for example, um, this year, what we basically did, we did a family game night. So that's something that we can introduce maybe in the evening time, a family game night. We've done, um, where they had the opportunity with a potluck and we have the community come in and set up, um, tables. And they just talk to individuals as they come through, career choices, so on and so forth. Um, we've also done, um, just jeopardy tribias. So there's different things that we can definitely approach the school with and different ideas. Um, and I'm more than willing, uh, to help them with that and planning that, that's not a problem.
And that's good to hear. And so you, you talked about having different, um, events during the month. Have you, um, thought about where you want to have these events throughout the town?
Um, the school was one that I would definitely look at. Um, if we were running something in the evening, I was thinking of the hall, um, um, using that, that even maybe just collaborating with the library as well. As another opportunity, because I know there's like younger children that may not be in school as yet, but they should still have an opportunity to come in here. Um, different, um, things about Black history, so I think the library would be another, um, place that we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Uh, Steve maybe was giving some of the questions towards the high school, but we have the public schools as well. That are, one is quite diverse, the others are getting diverse as time goes on. And I always hope that we can get them at a very young age to understand rather than as time goes on and, you know, mindset starts to become more, so, whatever they are. Um, so when you're doing programs, you're going to do them for the different ages. Would it be different nights for them and different styles of programs? Because the youth, the younger they are, it's, it's a lot different than, than say the teens.
Right, right, exactly. So that's, that's exactly it. So I notice with the library, they normally run programs in the day for children that are not in school at the time, so we can run something there. Um, bringing it down to their level, of course, and, and simplifying it. Um, like, um, there's different, um, individuals that we can look at and do a program around that. Um, of course, with the younger, the older group, the older age level, you could do a little bit more, you could go a little bit more advanced. Um, but yeah, we could definitely customize that, we could definitely look at that, customizing the program.
And I'm hoping it's not just you alone, volunteer-wise?
No, 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 it would be-
It's a lot of work, you know?
Yeah.
You always stand up for that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, there might be even like, um, we could definitely look at an opportunity of, uh, providing hours, um, for, um, those in the high school. And even those in elementary school, the volunteer always looks good. Um, it doesn't matter what age, if you're there out there in the community volunteering, it always looks great.
Get some ready for high school for volunteering, too.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Make some volunteers live.
Yeah, you want them to give back, too. They, they need to have that mindset to give back.
I know we had discussed as well about, um, you know, using Grace Tippin Hall, too, for a story night.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Where we could have some community members come and give some of their, um, you know, culture-based stories and, uh, and things like that. So that would also engage, you know, some of the younger kids as well as, you know, some of the older, uh, generation out there as well. Um, one story I was familiar with was, um, and that's the spider, so.
Yes.
Um, you know, something like that is really cool, excuse me, to, um, start to engage, uh, the community in general. So that I'd really be excited for.
And, and I guess my final question is the adults, because some, uh, in the campaigning, I kept hearing them and us. And I could never figure out what they meant by them and us, and I have a real issue when they come up with those terminologies. So there's, there's the adult mindset that also needs to be changed as well. So while we do it and we may be able to get the kids and whatnot in here, it's more difficult to get the older generation sometimes to come in here and, and look at things and, and look at the history and whatnot of, of, uh, events. So those types of events, again, here in Grace Tippin Hall, and would there be events planned that we could promote for those that, uh, need to come in and see?
Yeah, I, I find that food seems to bring it in there. And it's, it's worked, it's worked for us, to the works, for the adults especially. Um, so that's definitely, um, the Town of Callaghan, we were talking about, um, in their town hall, they have a cafeteria. So they were actually looking at to kind of set the displays up, but also have, uh, a night of, um, or like just for lunch, sell jerk chicken, for example. So it's kind of brings everyone, oh, I want to try that, I never tried that. So, um, and then at the same time, time, they're coming in there and they're seeing the displays, they're seeing the information there and reading. So, um, that, that's something that could definitely-
Because there is no kitchen in this hall and this, that's, so the issue of work.
No.
Yeah, but- It would be brought in, you know, we could have tables out in the hall, I know it could sort of be brought in, you know.
Or, or I was thinking of the Deafert Oaks, but-
Or that, yeah, yeah.
That area downstairs where there is the kitchen there and-
Yeah, no, we're too-
If that could be utilized in the county, could maybe help out with that, just to get the people-
So, so what, what, what sort of partnership specifically was it that you had with Town of Callaghan, what was the nature of the work sharing?
So it's a, we do Black History Month, so they basically gave it to us and say, okay, can you, they, can you set up everything for us?
Okay.
Um, so I did videos for them, um, that they could play in the town hall as well as in the community centers. Um, the, the artifacts I provided to them as well. Um, we have members of the community that has a lot of different various artifacts, so that was provided to us as well. So we basically made the, as the employees and members of the town came into the town hall. They basically were presented with that, so they were, you know, whenever they're paying a bill, they're reading all the information on the screen. Um, about Black history or if they're just waiting to speak to someone, they can see all the displays there while they're waiting.
So did they provide funding for you to help with the programming or?
Uh, no, so because a lot of it, um, they gave us the, anything I needed done, they took care of the video for us. Um, any photocopying, um, they took care of that for us, so that is pretty much it. And then the rest of it, um, members from our church provided it.
So other interests, yeah. Um, when you spoke about when they come in to pay the bills, say, I want to see the video. Would we be able to do something like that downstairs where they're paying the bills? There's no monitor there? It's just simply a, a monitor that used to be set up, right?
Well, you have to have an connection and keep those running as well. You have great power to it.
And there's no, no opportunity to provide power there, Jennifer, a front desk, that we could do?
I have to look in to see what's there.
I've got a spare monitor saying, oh, I'm giving it to you.
At least I've got some time to look in.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Yeah, it's good you're coming early.
All right, I think it's a fantastic idea, that they see it right when they're paying bills and they're coming in and then if we can do that, I think that's something we need to, to investigate seriously.
And I can't recall, but if there's screens at the rent sector.
There are really scenes-
Yeah, right, yeah, so that was something that they did, too, they ran in there as well.
Nice.
All right, any, any other questions, Nicole? Okay. So, so the recommendation that, that's, um, in, in the agenda simply is to receive the presentation, but, I mean, as, as the clerk just said, we have time. So I think, uh, you know, as, as we inch closer to next February, we can certainly re-engage this conversation and start to talk more, more seriously about what is it we're going to do, so. Yeah. Yeah, there, there is a grant funding application that, that the town offers and those applications go out in August, if we're further due in August. Um, so, so you may want to look into that sooner rather than later.
Okay.
And, and that, that would also deal with like in-kind services. I mean, if there's other services that, that town staff could provide, not strictly just, you know, financing, but, but other services, then that could be captured as part of that as well.
Or reach out the application.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And, you know, just, just in terms of streamlining things, I mean, that might not be a bad sort of process to go through anyways. Because then that would give council an opportunity to kind of see what the, the plan is that you have in mind.
I was wondering if we could also modify that motion to do, uh, investigation of what in-kind services we can provide. Because that goes back to, you know, Jennifer looking at whether a monitor could be, be, you know, set up, for example, to town hall. Those sort of touch things, you know, simple things that can help them. So that whenever they do come to us with their plan, we're sort of half-prepared for it, if that's okay?
Yeah, so, so how we want to rephrase that, or, or would we want to wait until you sort of have a plan and then we can determine?
I was just going to say that, that stop based on what was done in Callaghan and look at whatever in-kind services we could provide for Black History Month. That's the way I would rephrase it.
Yeah, so, so Nicole, I mean, if you want to connect with Jennifer and you sort of talk about the, the kind of services that you might need in the-
Okay.
Then let's take a step there. Okay, so the, the motion reads that council receives the presentation from Nicole Jeffrey, it's presented and circulated. I have a move or a second for that. By councillor Hall, seconded by councillor Benato, all in favor? Carrie? Thanks, Nicole. So the fourth presentation, uh, is on the agenda from David Claxton with respect to the, um, asylum event. I, I think there's been a slight change in plans, council Feigen wants to, to address that briefly.
Yeah, unfortunately, uh, and it's, it's with deep regret, uh, David's unfortunate going through a very personal, uh, difficult time at this point. So out of respect for him, we've unfortunately decided to cancel the event for this year. Uh, we are looking to bring it back next year. Um, hopefully, things will be calmed down for Dave at that point, but, uh, as of this year, we have to put it on hold, unfortunately.
All right, so there's no deputations on council, uh, items, moving on to, uh, council inquiries. I, I do believe that the treasurer has one request.
I do, and I believe the clerk's prepared a motion for it. Um, the candidate day committee has closed their bank account and, um, I am in receipt of the funds. So I just need a motion of council to open, um, our own candidate day committee account. And those funds will be treated as discretionary reserves and, um, reported on.
So a motion that we, sorry.
Sorry, Walter had confused the, it's to keep them separate.
Yeah, you, when you say discretionary funds, you mean for Canada Day?
Yes.
Okay. That's all that discretionary mean, different things between those two.
So the motion reads, be resolved, the council authorizes the treasurer to open a candidate day bank account at the RBC in Shelburne, having the same signing authority as currently exists for all other town accounts. And further, that the account be a discretionary trust fund in the town's financials. I have a move or a second for that, moved by councillor Feigen, seconded by councillor Wagner. Any discussion on that or questions for the treasurer? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And then one other item that I have under inquiries. There, there seems to be, um, a profusion of false information when it comes to, uh, the, the town's insurance requirements for events. And I know that councillor Wagner has kind of taken the brunt of, uh, of that misinformation. So I was hoping the staff could just very briefly kind of set out what those insurance requirements are to dispel any of the myths that might be floating around in there, particularly in social media.
Through the mayor, so the Town of Shelburne has a, a protocol and a practice, while it may not have been adhered to by all events in the past. That events by third parties operating in our parks or in our facilities require insurance. The reason for this is not only to protect the user of the facility, but to protect the corporation. Very generally, it generally is a two million dollar policy for use, where liquor or alcohol is being provided or served at five million. So for example, if you were having an event that requires vendors and they might be on the street. Either that event or the actual vendor requires insurance conaming the Town of Shelburne. What this does is it provides you with protection in the event that something happens, but more importantly, on our side- What this does is it provides you with protection in the event that something happens, but more importantly on our side of the equation, it protects the town of Shelburne from potential litigation. And as people might appreciate, municipalities tend to be organizations that might be sued with respect to activities. So this is very important. It also is a a standard practice of our insurance policy to have this kind of protection, so they provide us with guidance. I think the mayor let staff note earlier today, there's also information that's not accurate, that we're requiring volunteers who are participating in events and serving their communities to have insurance. That is truly not accurate. The insurance is for entities such as a business or organizer, you might have a vendor's table at an event. The option, the opportunity to get insurance is actually fairly simplistic. Through our insurer, which is Cowan, and the local broker is Crusom Company, there is a company called Pau. And what they do is they specialize in event insurance. So based on the kind of event that you're having, whether it be um selling knives, for example, or selling cookies, you would qualify based on the category and they would provide you with the price for the day or the week or the month or whatever you needed. So does that address everything?
Okay, hopefully.
Hopefully not this week.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so the consent agenda, uh there's two items there, um BIA minutes and library board minutes. Uh unless anybody wants to speak separately to either of those, there is a motion that items number one and two under six point one consent agenda be received and placed on file. Move for a second for that. Okay, we'll 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 get the motion on the floor and then see who wants to speak. Moved moved by uh Councilor Buffett, second by Councilor Benato.
Okay. I have a question if I can on the BIA minutes, uh there's a motion to BIA meeting, and I just want to clarify that you maintain the current appointees to the executive and a council. But then it goes and further, should attendance of future meetings increase, we will consider adding four council appointees to the complement. Linda, does that mean that if you get another three or four people, we will continue adding more appointees from council?
Too high right now and then have people not show up and then not have forums, so.
Okay, so so the intention is that council may also at some point in the future appoint more members, but not necessarily councilors?
Yes. That's right.
Okay.
Is that under their bylaws or under?
Uh uh under their founding bylaw, any member of the BIA has to officially be appointed by a council?
No, I understand that, but we can appoint as many as we want to uh committees, not the BIA that's dictating to us, it's the other way around. Or is it the BIA dictating to us this is just not?
Yeah, yeah, BIA to us.
Okay.
So so essentially what happens is they submit names for council to consider and and then we officially appoint them to the BIA.
No, just to clarify, at any one point, if you're a council of seven, no more than three members of council may serve on that committee to avoid having forum. And by virtue of that, it's a fact of council.
But that's not the.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
The council, so, okay. Any other questions or comments on that motion? All in favor? Carrie, okay. All right, items under considerations, number one is a report from the CAO regarding the well three update and project funding.
Okay, so through the mayor, um council is fully aware of this issue as we provided you with background information. I'm just gonna note that our municipal engineer, Mr. Steve Burnett, is here, so if he would like to come up closer if necessary to the meeting. So the report provides you with a summary of the situation that we're facing with respect to well three. As council is aware, we received the notification that our original grant application, which we were fairly confident we would receive, which was the allocation for the OCIF top up, we had assumed was somewhat guaranteed until the recent change. I think I outlined to the council in a memo that while we as staff expected a modest adjustment to the program, I would say never in a million years did we expect that the entire program would be eliminated. Therefore, our grant application and expectation of almost one point five million dollars would not be provided. So what we are dealing with now is a critical legislative requirement for compliance to address the arsenic issues that have been monitored for many years through the Ontario Clean Water Agency, working with SBA and the ministry to provide solutions in terms of blending. That option is not able to proceed, so therefore the report that was prepared in July is attached as an appendix to this report. And it outlines that the cost of the remediation work is approximately one point seven to two point one million dollars. So based on that budget and going forward that it is still the budget that we need to support, we've outlined what we need to be doing and why. So we did receive a one-time funding most recently and it was non-discretionary, or sorry, it was discretionary with respect to the general uh use of the funds in this project would be something that council could decide to allocate that to. So we're suggesting and recommending that that full amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand six six six, as provided recently by the Ontario government, be applied to this fund. Additionally, we had outlined through the budget as well as the last report that we have water reserves, but those water reserves were intended to help with the support costs related to either a water tower or the storage tank. So to utilize the full amount would not be strategic nor would be responsible. So we're suggesting that the amount that we should allocate is two hundred thousand dollars of that existing fund. Additionally, then we would need to borrow the balance and that sort of loans itself to the conversation that we had earlier tonight in terms of how much money in debt we are carrying. We don't know yet exactly how much this would be because we need to look at whatever the rates are. And the treasurer had contacted Infrastructure Ontario. We would anticipate in the short term using a capital, a construction loan, um and then determining, and we would bring that back to council, what term would be best, whether it's fifteen, twenty, or twenty-five years for this diventure. Either way, or in any way you look at this, this is a very significant cost for the town to fund. At one point seven million dollars, it would be better. We did indicate in the July report that at the top end of that project capital estimate, there was some flexibility to look at approximately three hundred thousand dollars in donations. Um but we still need to analyze that if that's the best go-forward strategy. So in summary, the report is fairly benign with respect to the detail because the additional report provides that all to you. We're recommending that, again, we allocate the full amount that we recently received for the flexible funding that we allocate two hundred thousand dollars from our reserve and that the balance be borrowed from Infrastructure Ontario, noting that the diventure load, I should say, would not be applicable to the two thousand and nineteen tax-supported operating budget, um because this is a water and sewer rate-related cost, but it would affect our diventure load. And we would come back to you with how much we need to borrow exactly from Infrastructure Ontario. I'm gonna let Steve, even though it's encapsulated in this report, address any questions with respect to the schedule. So you can see when we would start and that's right away. Um with the commissioning, meaning the opening of this, I guess, final project being complete, would be January, February, two thousand and twenty. I'm not sure what else to tell you with respect to this, other than it's not an option to proceed with this project in order to meet the compliance and regulatory requirements that the province has placed upon us. We will, though, however, be looking at our most recent water study, which wasn't completed that long ago. The water study traditionally will do a projection on what your capital costs are and therefore those water rates are a reflection of that and what we're charging to recapture and contribute towards the cost of the service. Carrie has been in touch with the consultant, which is Watson, and we don't need to do a full review of study, we can simply do an amendment. And what this would provide is a little bit of flexibility in terms of water rates contributing more towards the capital cost. What that also means that the water rates would go up. But it's either it goes on the tax with respect to the burden and it's still gonna be a water and sewer-related charge, or we look at the water rates and have a different schedule with this new information embedded in the future capital costs. That concludes my report, Karen. I'm more happy to take myself, Steve, or Carrie any questions?
Councilor Benato. I can go back the long way with the history of the water rates because I was here when it started out and we went on on that. The original Watson reports, the rates were considerably higher than what, and we brought them down because they were pretty expensive and the whole thing. So um realizing that um there's been two reports, I believe, prior that Watson has brought back at some point in time regarding rates. So I'm just wondering, you know, when you're saying about reviewing, talking maybe to Watson and seeing that modification of rates, maybe going back and looking at one of the earlier sets of rates that he had proposed?
The only problem with that is that would reopen for them to go back in history and research where all those numbers came from, you would be essentially paying for another study.
No, no, but this should be a report because it should be in the council. Whenever it was originally presented to council, that report was part of that council package.
We just did a study in two thousand and seventeen.
And we had one, should have been one before that, when it originally started out and the rates were quite a bit more steeper. I mean, um Mayor Crusom is still mayor at the time.
Are you thinking of DCs?
No, I'm thinking of Watson report. Because I remember at that time that we we did not accept that report and we told them to go back there and modify it because the rates were considerably.
That was that was the balance charges.
No.
Yes.
There should have been a water study in there as well when they originally started with water meters in New York.
But yeah, picking the Hemsen report, there was a Hemsen report on DCs.
That's interesting.
I know one one of them was rejected.
And there's a Watson report as well on water rates, so anyway, I I'm pretty sure.
So if I can just clarify to help, um when you look at your capital project list and you look at your water rates, they're usually based on estimates of what the capital schedule is. If you have a project that's not reflected in that schedule and cost it accordingly, then that information is missed. So what we're saying is this project is brand new with respect to the capital implications and the debt load to the town of Shelburne because we anticipated that it would be covered by OCA and top up and we would only be applying water reserve to this. So basically, it was not, I don't want to use the word wash because that's a bad pun, but it was not contemplated. So what we're asking now to avoid the full burden of the debt being borne in a different way is that if the water study can be amended and reviewed to incorporate this capital cost in that schedule, the water rates may be recommended for adjustment accordingly. So I mean, there's no way, it has to be paid for, it's just how is it paid for?
And the water had to be paid down in water and you're not on the tax base, so we have to be able to water it, but it's not.
But it's still, it's still has a bearing on the municipal, the municipality's capacity and debt. And if those water rates are contributing towards the cost of the debt, it gives us a little bit more flexibility in that area. So I mean, it doesn't cost us much to look at this, but we think it's a very important component of doing that. But regardless, the answer may be there's no ability to amend it quickly and we still have to borrow a significant amount of money to fund this project.
And I guess one other question, since this is something that the province put off while back to give us time to do the blending and to see if that would take care of our arsenic problem and they held off and held off and held off, would they also hold up on well three? And if not, because they're the ones that are forcing us into it, have we considered petitioning for the funding through our NPP?
I'm gonna address that, I'm gonna give Steve that. My understanding is that Shelburne was given some latitude because we were sort of the benchmark in why this project was being spearheaded. And there was a huge investment made with respect to giving enough time to actually allow a little test to do its course and it wasn't successful, so I'm gonna let Steve explain this.
Yeah, and I can maybe give some history to council and part of the reason why I'm here tonight because it wasn't very important, but I think I've I've also the background into it. So as you do recall, Walter, there was um s- some investment made by both the federal government and the provincial government towards well seven and eight, which was, for all counselors that are not aware of some of the background history, uh there is a naturally occurring arsenic within the town's boundaries. Uh town of Shelburne is the largest uh town that experiences this. There are three or four other within the province that experience arsenic, Shelburne is the largest. Steve was absolutely correct that the guideline that came out was actually established closer to, I want to say, two thousand and twelve to reduce the arsenic levels from twenty-five uh micrograms per liter down to ten micrograms per liter. That actually going into the public record record and being adopted was held until the town of Shelburne was able to bring well seven, eight online. The importance of that is well seven, eight was uh drilled in a area outside of the that's of the influence with the arsenic, which is essentially within the town boundaries. Um so well seven, eight is the well that's been drilled um approximately four kilometers out of town. The large project that was referred to earlier by the auditors and the money spent was in respect to bringing that water from well seven, eight, blending it with the supply at well five, six. Um so bring it into context, well five, six probably over the years has run around sixteen to seventeen uh micrograms per liter. Uh so blending with the less than one, we'll say it's not zero, but less than one at well seven, eight has allowed us to bring that down um below uh eight or nine for the average, which brings it under ten, meets the regulatory requirements. The previous uh group that was here prior to probably all of us around the table had thought that mixing of well three would also bring that uh level under the uh the requirements of ten um at the time, and even now it runs around eleven, uh maybe cresting close to twelve, but it's just over the limit of ten. Around that time, there was a transition with the engineering group, with the um internal staff as well. So there was some more detailed investigation done of that option and it was uh proven through more detailed testing through the initial engineering, which has already been completed, that that wasn't possible. The difficulty with that mixing concept is that is you can appreciate uh any of the water that is close to that well three supply also has water with it, um that is in that same eleven, twelve uh micro uh grams per liter. And there's not a different source to be able to mix it with similar to the other seven, eight supply that was able to do that. So at that point, there was um work done with the Washington Clean Water Agency from a piloting perspective, uh looking at technology to treat the water. That sets, that test was extremely successful, dropping the arsenic levels down by ninety-four percent, so closer to under one, um one and a half during that testing. So that's where it was decided to go forward and apply for the funding associated with the OCA program. Uh which as Denise pointed out, is essentially under the old program, under the previous government, was your money to spend, uh depending on how you applied for that, whether it was over multiple years or in a one lump sum top up, which is part of the reason why it was not included um in the most recent water rate study update as well. At this point, as uh the CAO pointed out, uh it's it's not an optional piece from the perspective that even though well three is only one of the four supplies that is still uh providing uh drinking water to the town, it does make up anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent of the supply uh of the town's water supply. So well, people can say, well, just take it offline or I'll look finding another option. This has been through several iterations of uh best practice, what to do, and ultimately settled on the uh the most feasible and technically sound solution to it. And the cost, as we said, we are looking at cost savings measures as much as possible. Um but the numbers put forward were the budgets that were established for this project, so. At this point, I think the uh motion in front of council is to allocate the funds that were, I guess, sent out in replacement of this top up um to still move forward with the most cost-effective uh finalization of design and move forward with the project. But uh if we don't move forward with it, I guess, to answer your question, Walter, we've already been in the ministry, I think, four or five times. They're very well aware of the situation. Um but at this point, they have made it very clear that it's a town Shelburne issue, not a ministry issue, uh given the like the time that the first one came forward, so um it's ours to solve the rest.
And and I think to be clear too, you know, it's worth noting that the funding that we were hoping for and counting on, you know, it's not as though our our application was turned down, the the province canceled that entire funding model, so. the province canceled that entire funding model, so it's off the board, yeah. So, you know, we, we lost essentially one and a half million dollars and then found out a few days later that our share under this new program was, was about five hundred thousand dollars, so. For, for some municipalities, I guess, who weren't eligible for the OCIF top up initially, this new funding was a benefit for us, it was a net loss. So I'll, I'll read the motion, add for a mover and secondor, and then if, if there's any more discussion, we can have that, but the motion reads as follows. Be it resolved, the council receives report CAO two thousand and nineteen dash zero six regarding well three update and project funding, and staff be directed to allocate the Town of Shelburne's one-time payment of five hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars, announced by the Ontario Government on March twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, against the estimated total project cost of one point seven to two point one million, and staff be directed to fund approximately two hundred thousand dollars of the capital project from water reserves detailed in the approved two thousand and nineteen budget, and the balance of the estimated project costs be funded using a venture from Infrastructure Ontario. A mover and secondor for that motion. Deputy Mayor, Councilor Wagner, any further discussion on that or questions for?
Yeah, just getting back to what Walter commented on regarding the province and the fact that there's only a few municipalities in Ontario that have this issue. And the money that was distributed to all the rest of the municipalities, they just took that money and spread it out to everybody when they didn't need it. I think we need to petition the province through Sylvia Jones and ask that they review that and look at providing us the money in total.
And, and I don't disagree that, you know, I think we probably should have at least expressed our displeasure with the way this whole thing was handled, but correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, I mean, I think timing is most certainly the essence here. So in the interim, I, I think we have to do something to move this along, but, but I think you're right, I think we're.
But what's the worst case scenario, what are they going to do, shoot us?
Pretty strong.
Well, the worst case scenario is that arsenic is tested for every three months, you are coming up on your next round of testing. We have indicated to the province since last January of two thousand and eighteen that we would resolve this issue, so they will order the well to shut down and then we will be short on the supply. The other alternative is that the town and the operators can be charged for operating well that is under compliance. So right now, we are fully communicating with both the ministry as well as the health unit, they're fully aware of the situation. I don't disagree at all that it was a frustrating scenario to be, to get the paperwork that came through because I think even the ministry, to be fair, was supportive of the OCIF program being used for this. Of course, they have no control over that. Basically, the, it was under the previous provincial government's regime and the new provincial government spread that funding over many more municipalities versus a handful that were qualified for the one. I would suggest it be done in, in unison, to be honest, from my perspective, it takes time to finalize the engineering to solicit bids. We want to have this during this summer construction window versus getting increased costs for the town by moving into winter or fall construction, so.
So I'm not suggesting that we don't ask for the money.
Yeah.
I suggest that we continue on, but we still request that they do that.
And, and I, and I think that's fair, that's what I meant, you know, I, I think we're well within our rights to, to express that to our, to our members, but you know, at the same time concurrently, I do think we have to act on this.
Yeah, but not suggesting that we stop.
Deputy Mayor and I are waiting for confirmation on it, I mean, with Minister Jones as well, so I mean, that's something we can add.
So through Mayor Mills, I should note, because the way that we found out about this was, and I referenced it in this report, was that it was embedded in another announcement letter, and we sat there going, do we think that this means what we think this means? And we were pretty sure it meant that, and we confirmed that amongst ourselves, and then got this letter to confirm that this was actually happening. So this was the only notification on a project of this significance that we received. So this was somewhat troubling because we had been waiting and waiting and waiting for this, knowing that it had significant impacts to our potential debt. And the reason we need this approved is as we start to plan for the two thousand and twenty draft budget in August of this year, we need to project and have ready for council's consideration what the term of this debt will be. I mean, we gave you an example of what the annual debt load would be based on the infrastructure rates, assuming a fifteen-year loan, and we have to then have principal and interest payments of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more per year just for this project. So if you look at a project that is six or seven or eight million dollars, and we're projecting borrowing one point seven for a hundred and fifty more a year, you know, quadruple that for a project that's six or seven million, to give you context. So we would like to have a schedule before you because this will have significant impact on the water into our rates and the borrowing flow for the next year.
Okay, so, so the motion was moved by Deputy Mayor Anderson, seconded by Councilor Wagner. Does any member want me to reread it, be clear on it? All the question, all in favor? Okay. Thanks, Steve. Okay, so the second report is from the town planner regarding Highland Village subdivision, third preservicing agreement, and the drainage engineers' report.
And since that's the drainage engineers before, that's.
But that was honestly your opinion, right?
Just one quick item of proof, Steve, I'm not sure if you caught this, Jennifer, in the resolution, but I noticed, so my report is number P twenty nineteen oh seven, and the first line of the recommendation refers to P eighteen nineteen oh six, so that's the report number oh seven. The purpose of the report in your agenda package, generally, is twofold. The first is a, a further amendment to the preservicing agreement for the Highland Village development. I won't go over the background of that for long, I think you're all pretty familiar with it now, this is the west side of Shelburne, and you can see Main Street, that the development site is, is well underway. The preservicing agreement, or I guess the second purpose of the agreement before, or the report before I get into the first, is, is just a drainage act requirement regarding the realignment of the Besley Drain in conjunction with this subdivision development. So regarding the first, there has been a preservicing agreement authorized and executed for this development. It goes back to last May, and it allows the earthwork to commence on the site, so all the filling and grading that they've done. And then secondly, the realignment of the Besley Drain, which is the subject of the drainage engineer's report. Last fall, the, actually it was the end of August last year, the preservicing agreement was further amended to add the underground services. Those have pretty much now been completed and installed in the subdivision. The town holds securities for all that work. And also last fall, council authorized a subdivision agreement, but the developer's still working on clearing some of the conditions of the subdivision for registration, as well as some of the finer details that would happen later on in the development, including the landscape design, some of those elements. So they really aren't quite ready to execute the subdivision agreement. As soon as they do so as well, that triggers some additional financial securities on their end, so they want to get more of the work done under preservicing before doing the subdivision agreement. So they have asked for one more amendment to the preservicing agreement, and this is to add the sanitary pumping station. So this was the subject of the report in February. You recall there were some options for the town with respect to including a public washroom in that sanitary pumping station, because the pumping station, as shown here, would be located in the park block, in the middle of the development. Just scroll through some visuals to help refresh our memories on this. So the pump station is that little L-shaped, reverse L-shaped building in the southeast corner. That was the original design, as, as we presented back in February, much larger building than required for the washroom, so this is what the floor plan looked like. The cost of that was going to be pretty exorbitant, you'll probably have familiar costs for the washroom component. So we said, okay, we need a scaled back plan that would be more reasonable for the park. This was the original sort of design of the building, again, a little bit more elaborate than needed for a pump station and park washroom for a neighborhood park. So at that meeting, this scaled back option was looked at as a possibility. This one was the option that was going to run probably in the range of about two hundred thousand dollars based on preliminary numbers. We didn't have all the detailed architectural design and P estimates yet for that, but the utility room was the key thing, there were two options, one which would remove it, one which would include it, and then the third option, which ultimately council directed to look at further, was to have a scaled back utility room. So Tribute has gone back to their designers and come up with that design. This is how that revised, the reduced building would be positioned within the park block, so sort of in the southeast corner, the washroom door is facing south, and the pumping station more in the north end. Those shapes that you see to the north, so this is an engineering drawing, are the wet well, really the functional elements of the pumping station that receive and pump the wastewater, and then the, the darker lines that you see are the forest mains that, that will be constructed to convey waste water. So this is the floor plan that they've had a detailed estimate provided for both the pump station and the washroom component, so you can see on the left-hand side, the scaled back utility room, got rid of the double door, shrunk the width of it, ultimately reduced the total floor plate of the building as a whole, and of the washrooms and utility room combined from two hundred square feet to two hundred and sixty square feet, so a little bit of savings by shrinking down the, the utility room component. This is what the building would look like in terms of the architectural design. This would be sort of the east side of the building, this would be the west, and then the two ends of the building, so the south end on the left side and the north on the right. So just before I leave that, we are working with the developer Tribute to ultimately get a more detailed breakdown of just the washroom component. What they've done is they provided a detailed breakdown of the cost of the whole building, and then allocated those costs based on percentage floor area, and when you do that, you get some elements that only need for the pump station, allocated to the washroom, like all the additional electrical panel, family, the backup power, things you wouldn't normally do for just a washroom. Accounting, as well as the future auditing will need a more detailed breakdown of what are the actual washroom components, the fixtures, the finishes, and all those kinds of things. So they're working with their contractor to give us those numbers, but just based on the floor space breakdown, the costs are within that range that we talked about at the last meeting, which was again about the two hundred thousand dollar range, just sort of an upper of the, to the cost of the washroom. So the purpose of the agreement is really just to let them start mostly building some of those infrastructure elements that I talked about that are north of the pump station, and while they're doing that, we'll sort of, those detailed cost estimates for the washroom come back with a DC credit cost sharing report for that, because those costs would be eligible for a DC credit when they start pulling building permits. But the purpose tonight is really to amend that preservicing agreement so they can actually start on some of the engineering aspects, like the, not the building itself, but the, the underground services. It would allow them to move the building forward as well, but if they want any cost sharing for it, of course, we'll have to come to an agreement on that before that, that moves forward. The second purpose of the report is the appointment of a drainage engineer. This is again for the Besley Drain realignment, so those who aren't familiar, Besley Drain runs, I should have put this slide first, through the south end of the property, from the IK World property to the west. You can see along the solid dark blue line through the Highland Village property, which is outlined in light blue, and then down into the Amaranth project to the south. While the dash line reflects this more meandering creek limit, which is where they will realign that drain to. So over the course of the next several weeks, what they're proposing to do is basically create that realignment in the dry, so create that new drainage corridor, and then once they have all their permits and this completed drainage engineer's report from the town, they would connect it to the drain on either end, and the water would flow through the new channel. And they can fill in the old channel, plant the whole area with trees and vegetation, and basically create a naturalized water course section through their, through the subdivision. The town would ultimately assume all that block of land around the drain and essentially become like a public open space feature in environmental, environmentally protected land. The reason that the drainage engineer's report is required is because this is classified as a municipal drainage, under the Drainage Act. So for the reason the Drainage Act exists and why it's classified as municipal drainage crosses and benefits multiple properties, and under the Drainage Act, if somebody were to petition for some improvements to be made, or to bear some costs to improve the drain that benefit other landowners, the Drainage Act essentially provides a process for allocating those costs to everybody else. Doesn't really apply here because the developer's going to bear all the costs, including the engineering design and the report for the Drainage Act. But nevertheless, legislatively, we have to have that report prepared. So Steve's office has prepared a draft of that report, really just building on and summarizing the more detailed, via more quality pool and other reports that have been done by the developers and engineers. That report will be finalized once the subdivision is registered and all the benefiting lands and blocks are, are defined legally. In the meantime, though, in order for the developer to pull permits from the NBCA to allow the drainage work to start, they needed like a draft of that drainage engineer's report. So there is a bylaw under the Drainage Act that council is required to appoint a drainage engineer to prepare that report, so that's the purpose of the bylaw on the agenda tonight. Although the report's been drafted, it hasn't been finalized and really can't be until that appointment takes place. Once that report is finalized, then it will be filed with clerk, and it'll be a notice, and then there'll be a final council approval of that report. I think that's basically it. I have reviewed the agreement and circulated to, obviously to Jim, to the council solicitor as well. We've been working with Steve's office in terms of the bylaw and the Drainage Act requirements. Initially, in my report, the CIO recommended three readings of the drainage engineer appointment by law. We then talked to the NBCA and realized that there's a thirty-day notice they're supposed to get before the appointment of the officer. They've been in the loop on this, obviously, from the very beginning, so it's not a surprise to them, but we do have to address that technical notification requirement before the appointment by law is finally passed.
So we do first and second tonight?
Exactly, so we recommend two readings, and third reading we can do thirty days after we give this notice, which will probably do some time, isn't it? So with that, if you have any questions for either myself or Steve, we're happy to try and answer them.
Right, we've got the motion on the floor first, where it reads, be it resolved, the council, the Town of Shelburne receives report P two thousand and nineteen dash zero seven regarding a third preservicing agreement and, and draft drainage engineer's report for the Highland Village subdivision development as information, and that leave be given for the reading and enacting bylaw number twenty-four dash two thousand and nineteen, being a bylaw to enter into a third subdivision and preservicing agreement with Tribute and Tribute Shelburne Limited Partnership, and that first and second reading be given for bylaw number twenty-five dash two thousand and nineteen, being a bylaw to appoint Espernet and Associates Limited Engineering and Environmental as drainage engineers to prepare an engineer's report for the Besley Drainage Works under the Drainage Act. A mover and secondor for that. Councilor Denial, second by Councilor Buffett. Any questions for our engineer or plan?
I have a question. I don't recall, you refresh my memory, when it comes to the bathroom component, did we discuss security features, floodlighting cameras, that was part of that cost?
There will be some external lighting around the building, but no like security cameras or anything like that. Basically, the town would decide when those washrooms would be open, just, you know, keeping them under lock and key. During the park hours, I would imagine they would be open, but that's something we'd work, work out with Jim and the whole clerk's team.
And my last question is, if you converted the bathroom space into a gender neutral bathroom, would that reduce the cost?
So we do have to provide one AODA compliant washroom, so the way that we've shown that is that we've done one gender neutral AODA compliant, one in the middle, and one traditional male and female on either side of that. Ultimately, the way the building is sized, you know, this is going to be a certain shape to maintain that footprint going out, so I think we probably wouldn't really save any space because it has to be a certain width for the one bathroom. width for the one bathroom to fit all the fixtures that need to go in. And it's, we don't want to jog the building in just for that one part on the end. If we did that, it might end up a little bit cheaper, but that extra jogging involved might just end up being the same cost as having a straight building.
Question. Going back on what Steve said, I know we had issues in the green with the washrooms up there, even though we specified park times and whatnot. Going back to security, I think that was the reason for the security question. You can say, yes, it's locked up, but some people have a tendency to do damage to buildings, even if they are locked up. So I think that's why the question was on security camera, whatnot, because it is, yes, it's another residential area, but even with lighting and at nighttime, things happen. And then it becomes difficult to follow up, to figure out how the damage occurred and follow up with whatever occurred in the way of damage occurs.
I think the clerk has a comment.
Through your worship, so in the 2019 budget, the secured cameras were approved for purchase at Greenwood Park at Natasha Patterson Pavilion. Additional camera purchases would have to go through the 2020 budget, but we definitely put that in there for consideration.
Well, and I think Steve's question brought it up rather than us putting it into a budget if this park is up. The cost of the developer putting it in there.
I think the difficulty is that the developer was not requested for that previously, and they have already tendered the project, and it's, they're negotiating a percentage, I guess, because the washrooms are ultimately a town contribution cost. So I think it would be, either way, at this point, I think it would be a town cost.
I can just clarify, those are considered operating costs, they're not development contributions. And additionally, if we're going to have security cameras, we want the same system in all of our parks to be utilized, so that they have common software applications if we go that route. So we'll certainly take that under advisement, but it would not be part of this part of the project. It would be à la carte, something we would have to consider.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We've been just over two and a half hours, so I think with everyone's indulgence, I think we'll maybe take a five-minute recess, give everybody a chance to stretch their legs, use the washroom. I have to. Recommands about five minutes. Payments under Municipal Act Sales Act. You want to speak to that at all, Carrie, or?
Do you want? Is really a housekeeping matter?
Why don't I get the motion out there, and then if anybody has any questions, you can ask them. Be it resolved, the council receives report FS 2019-04, and the council delegates the authority from the treasurer and/or his or her designate to enter into a tax rearers extension agreement with respect to the sale of land for tax revenues outlined in Part 11 of the Municipal Act, Section 378, Sub 1, as amended. Move it second for that. Counselor Buffett, second by Counselor Donato. Any comments or questions to the treasurer?
At one point, these to come to councils for how long the extensions would be. Now we don't do that anymore?
The act now allows the treasurer to engage with the property owner, through the lawyers. We use a lawyer for this. And it avoids the person's tax account being discussed in a public court.
Right. Are we notified, though, how many properties are bought for sale, and at what point does that happen?
If it gets that far, yes.
Yes. It still comes to council.
It's a sale by public tender.
Okay.
Yeah. It doesn't have to come to council.
Doesn't have to come to council at all.
We've sent 12 files this year to the lawyers for registration, and out of those 12, nine of them have paid in full. So there's still three files outstanding, but you have 280 days to make some type of arrangement or enter into an extension. So we're not anger there yet.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor? Carrie. All right, item number four, a report again from the treasurer regarding municipal grant funding request from the Dufferin Board of Trade. May the motion be resolved, the council receives report FS 2019-05, and the council instructs staff to ask the Dufferin Board of Trade to select one project and apply by the August 31st, 2019 deadline for consideration in the 2020 budget. Move it second for that. Counselor Fegan, second by Counselor Donato. Any comment? All in favor? Carrie. Report from the clerk regarding new terms and reference for the Parks and Recreation Task Force, as well as the Arts and Culture Committee. So the draft terms of reference are included in the agenda package. Motion reads, be it resolved, the council receives report LS 2019-08 from the clerk regarding the new terms of reference for the Parks and Recreation Task Force and the Arts and Culture Committee, as presented and circulated, and further the council adopts the terms of reference for the Parks and Recreation Task Force and the Arts and Culture Committee. Move it second for that one. Counselor Hall, second by Counselor Buffett. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Next is a letter requesting that we waive rental fees. Motion reads as follows, be it resolved, the council receives a request for waiving rental fees at Fiddle Park, as presented and circulated. Move it second for Counselor Buffett, second by Counselor Fegan. Any questions on that? Carrie, you just want to mention what the costs are associated with that?
Jennifer has that number. Yeah, it's written in the, yeah. Kitchen and park fund is 200, holding deposits 50, damage deposits 200, in total $450. And the requester is asking to waive those fees.
All in favor? Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
Just a confirmation, did we have a direction to stop to, or is there something special about revisiting fees? That's in the works, right? Okay. This one, okay.
Okay. All in favor? opposed? Carrie. All right, so that brings us to the notices of motion from the last meeting. The first one is my motion, it was second, I believe, by Counselor Donato. I mentioned earlier that there were a couple of words that didn't make their way in there that I intended, so I'll read it as I intended. So it reads as follows, be it resolved, the council requests staff to review all former space planning considerations developed by Police Accommodation Subcommittee, and be it further resolved, the staff provide a summary of this information to determine whether the Shelburne Police Services Accommodation adequacy concerns could be satisfactorily addressed through renovation and expansion of the current facility at a cost not exceeding $3 million. I think I've explained the rationale for this motion earlier in the meeting during question period, but if there's any other comments or questions from council, we'll deal with those.
Just out of curiosity, since we're going down the, like you said, we flipped the whole idea of like researching and doing the analysis on the renovation on its head by giving it a budget to start with. What's, is there any reason why we can't do the same thing, or should not do the same thing in regards to any location or new building or retrofit?
I guess we can. I mean, this motion asks for staff to take a look at the three sort of accommodation options that were looked at by the two subcommittees, and then to present that information for council to drill down on one in particular that I'm most interested in. I guess once that information goes back to council, if council decides they want to take a closer look at one of the other two options, we could probably apply the same logic to one of those as well.
Personally, from my point of view, we're looking at, as been mentioned, the amount that we can afford more, basically, right? So having been here at the table prior, and having seen the other ones even before our mayor was on board and our deputy mayor was on board, the costs were just not there. Realistically, I mean, they were talking seven mil without leaving, looking at the cost of servicing and land, and just something that's not within the purview of what we can afford. I mean, we could look at them, but I think being realistically, if the three mil is something that is palatable, that we can afford, and be able to do something with it in the way of accommodation, at least it gives us an option B, rather than just sticking to, well, here's the costing, and that's all you've got. Well, you've got something else that you can look at. So I like the idea of starting out with what can we afford? We can afford the three mil, that is something that we possibly can afford. So at least setting that as an upper limit on the budget gives us something that we can work it. Again, as the mayor said, doesn't stop us from looking at the others. I mean, if we can get something brand new built for three mil, great, well, look at it, or, you know, whatever. But that's the upper limit of what we can afford.
Fully agree.
So looking at it from that point of view. And I think this gives you the more of that history that, you know, having sat at this table, you will get, and through our engineer and the Walter Fetter report and all the rest of that information that was presented to previous councils, we'll come forward to you, and you will have an opportunity to look at it and see why those numbers that came forward came forward, and, you know, look at the reality of it. So it doesn't limit anything, I don't think. It just gives you the option of looking at it, but all it does is say, you know, this is the upper limit of what we, realistically, to the taxpayer can afford.
Just to speak on that, how set in stone is that then, 100%? Like, what if it does come in just a little over three? Is there any flexibility, or is it three?
Yeah, I think, you know, well, I don't think, I know. My intent of this motion is to sort of set, you know, like I said, set a budget in place. You know, I think it actually refers to Mark's earlier question. I mean, if we find out that, you know, we can affect a renovation and an expansion, it's going to be 3.1, you know, then obviously that's something that I think we should probably look at with a, you know, fairly high degree of seriousness. But, you know, to just go into it without any parameters, which kind of was the case initially, you know, this sets something more realistic and more responsible for us as a guidepost, and gives, you know, staff and our engineer some direction when they go back to the drawing board to see if this is even, you know, within the realm of possibility, or if it's not even close.
I mean, going back, you also got to be realistic, that we have to look at all the other projects we have on the books, and if it comes at 3.7, for example, does it limit the other projects that are on the books that we need to have done as well? You know, are we looking realistically at it? So that was what was missing in everything else, is we were getting these numbers, but we were missing all the different pieces and components that, you know, with no budget, hadn't been real set. I mean, realistically, I'd like to have a mansion.
Yeah.
Can I afford it? No. I have to be more realistic, what I can afford, you know? So the way it was coming before is, well, I could build a $100,000 home, or I could build a million-dollar home, and this is the price for a million-dollar home, you know? That's what was given to us.
So it seems that what we're talking about is a contingency to the three million. So what is it above the three million? Because to your point, so I'm wondering whether there should be some sort of upper limit established with respect to that, because if we want someone to come back and say, well, it's 3.9, and it's close to the three, it's not four, it's not five, and so why don't we go with that? But to your point, I would assume that at some point we would have to cap it. But I commend you for putting something forward. You know, my mom always says, don't put your hat where you can't reach it. And so you don't want to be, this, I believe, allows one to manage expectations as to what, as you say, we can afford, as Walter has articulated as well. So I like it as a start, but it does beg the question whether an upper limit should be established, so that, again, we're managing those expectations, so that we're not thinking if it's 3.7, oh, for sure, we'll do it.
Yeah, and to that point, I think 3 million does establish that upper limit, and we'll find out how close we come to that. You know, I would hesitate to increase that at this point, because if we can achieve it for less than that, then I don't want to give, you know, somebody else the latitude to say, well, you know, we can add it to this. So, I mean, 3 million is a number that, even though it would be significantly uncomfortable, I think, for the town to bear, it is something that we could manage without, you know, causing detrimental harm to our finances in other areas. So my suggestion would be, let's try to work within that framework for now, and if we have to look at that down the road in terms of a slight uptick, then, you know, that's something we can assess at that time, once we know how drastic that uptick may be.
Do you want to know?
We can assume that it'll hurt.
A $3 million loan for 20 years would require just over a $200,000 payment, $201,479 would be your principal payment per year for 20 years, which is approximately, in this year's, in the 2019 budget, would be almost three percent.
For 20 years?
Yeah, we just add 1.7, potentially for 15 to 20 years.
And that's principal only?
That's principal, and that's your paid pleasure.
So as I said, the upper limit is three.
Well, like I say, I hesitate to go north of that at this point, because as we can see, that's going to be painful enough. So let's see what we can achieve for 3 million, and, I mean, I wouldn't say that it's a deal breaker, if it comes in, you know, slightly over that. I mean, personally, I think I'd be willing to look at it, but, you know, I don't want to set those expectations at this point.
So I was asked to clarify another question from the police chief, that it was staff's assumption that the mayor's direction did not include the applicable DCs that potentially could be applied to this project, and future DCs that would be designated for the project. So there's approximately $300,000 worth of DCs currently that would have been collected for growth-related facilities of which this would qualify. That we would, so we're not borrowing, and we, as staff presumed, that this meant not exceeding, would be the borrowing capacity of the project, not, for example, there would be funding applicability potentially of that money, which is designated for that function.
And are we also looking at reviewing our DCs for future projects?
Our DC study loop is done the end of this year, so we will be doing a full DC study in 2020.
If we include the police expansion?
It's already in there. It's always in there.
In the new study?
Any study.
In any studies.
If you have police, they're always included, as is required.
But when you have the capital costs, does that, make that possible to be more than what we're normally going to calculate? Because that's not something we're doing right now, because we don't have the need for the 3 million, but if that takes place, that's going to be a capital cost.
Well, it would be up to council to determine what avenue you're going to take. You can't put a figure in the DC study and then not go that route.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, so if you did put that in, then you'd be able to help that pay for that.
You can, you can, yeah, it would be a proportion, and it would be like a clawback, because you've spent the money, but you're collecting it later.
And that would then pay for payments in the future?
In part.
Yeah, in part, as a whole, to me.
Okay. Thank you for the connection on the motion. Is everyone clear on it? Dr. Reed, again? Good. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, so the second notice of motion from the last meeting was moved by Counselor Wagner, and I believe seconded by Counselor Fegan. So it reads as follows, be it resolved, the council approves the $10,000 previously allocated reduction of a tennis court slash pickleball court to be reallocated back to providing soccer nets to the Shelburne Soccer Club to provide protection from the sewage treatment plant holding ponds in the amount provided to town staff and council from a written letter of request and quote of the cost from providing a Canadian supplier of the Shelburne Soccer Court. Do you want to speak to that first, Counselor Wagner?
Yeah, so, you know, we had discussed about, you know, putting a pickleball court and a tennis court. Once we received some further information...
Once we received some further information that the cost associated with that is quite substantial and the fact that the CBRC did or has currently offered now pickleball, I figured, you know, this could be the opportunity to sort of further help the Shelburne Soccer Club, seeing as the soccer field was put over in, in that area. I guess my, my concern is that, you know, helping them not incur more costs related to replacing balls and whatnot and, and of course, potentially helping us as the town as well and not having those balls go into, into those areas and maybe causing some damage. I don't know if we should amend this a little bit, maybe to, you know, give a limit or, or something of that nature because I don't know if the nets will cost the whole $10,000. And I mean, personally, I would like to see some of that money need to go into basketball courts or something of that nature and not making a basketball court, but like going over green wood and potentially having lines painted on, on the courts, maybe nets put in if, if the nets are damaged or whatnot. So just improving some small areas of the current parks that we have. But I guess I have to wait until I know what the cost is for those nets. So I don't know if we want to table this until we, you know, receive that information or if we can go on something like that now.
As I recall, you know, as, as part of the, the budget deliberations when, when this was first addressed, I think that was one of the concerns that, you know, the $10,000 figure had, had been offered by the soccer club, but hadn't really been supported by any sort of, you know, quotes or anything like that. It seemed to be a number that, you know, was sort of bandied about at some point as, as being approximate, but, you know, nobody had any, you know, real degree of certainty that that was going to be an accurate number, you know, to, to buy these, these nets. Kyle, you seconded the motion, I mean, I.
I honestly, if we can go back to the soccer association and say, you know what? Let's net this out. What is it actually going to cost? I'm comfortable with tableing the motion until we actually have fixed costs and go from there.
Mayor listed on the delegation for April 29th.
Maybe we could table it till then when they come and provide us with hopefully some actual quotes or some actual figures.
Can we send a letter to them asking for those specific quotes? See if we can get that.
Well, I have to submit a presentation package, so I'll let you see what's in my presentation package. I would recommend.
Okay. And under our procedural bylaw, as long as the movement is seconded, are you going to table it?
Yes.
So people can table it, okay. So that motion's been tabled to the, sorry, London.
Just one more point. Having discussed that a little bit with Lindsay this morning, I suggested that maybe I could ask our roadway club if they're interested in maybe contributing all or a portion for that because we're always looking for smaller projects that we can pay for.
Sounds like a great idea.
Like the idea, it's in that. And maybe I can get an answer.
Okay.
Oh, we'll have to wait, so we'll have to wait until after that meeting. Get the ball rolling, so to speak.
Yeah. All right, so we'll table that one until April 29th. And then the third notice of motion from the last meeting was moved by Counselor Donato, seconded by Counselor Buffett, and it reads as follows, be it resolved that the town Shelburne investigate the LAS, sorry, investigate with LAS the opportunity to offer residents of Shelburne the service line warranty and in-home plumbing repair program. Do you want to explain what that is?
Sure. A lot of residents don't realize that the sewer line and water piping, for that matter, from the house to where they reached the lot line is not, has nothing to do with the town. It is totally on them to cover the costs should there be any failure. What this is, is a form of insurance that would cover that cost for a reasonably low price. This is something that has been done in other municipalities and been offered to the residents. That can be quite expensive if you end up having a tree go through your sewer pipe or a water pipe and you end up having to dig it up and replace it. There have been residents in the past, including one on the back lane here in the town, that were unable to cover the costs of that repair. And should a failure happen, it can also create a health hazard if you're not able to cover that cost. So this is just something that the, an LAS is part of AMO, which is the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. This is a program that they offer to the residents through, like I said, the insurance and the residents can buy into it or not buy into it, that's their option. But at least we, we are able to get the information out there to the residents, letting them know that this program is available, they have the option of buying into it if they want to cover that. It's no different than covering the insurance for your house or for anything else that could possibly go wrong. At least you're not maybe looking at a $10,000 cost in a replacement of a sewer line that you may have to pay a plumber and someone to come and dig it all up for you. So I believe the CAO has.
You have some experience with it.
Many municipalities have facilitated that information and many members of the community take advantage of that insurance because it's absolutely just proactive care to make sure that in the event that, and a lot of people know somebody who actually have to incur those costs, so they're quite aware of that it's not an insignificant undertaking and it's, it's insurance. Other firms do provide it, but this is a very good rate and because they're affiliated formally with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, as we also know that they come by credibility and quality of service attached to those services.
And, and I think the key to, to point out is that, yeah, it, it's voluntary, but I mean, as far as our role is concerned, we're only facilitating information. So, I mean, there's no cost or to the town and there's no kickback to us if, if residents avail themselves of it. It's just simply we're, we're sort of acting as a flow through to provide this information to residents to say, if you're interested, there is a service available.
And we assume that, sorry, Counselor Donato, that would come with a clear disclaimer, right? That whatever public info we're going to be disseminating, there's going to be a clear disclaimer indicating what you just said.
Yeah.
That would be important.
Yeah, there, there's usually a template where the, it's very common language that goes on the letter, we facilitate the distribution, sometimes it's through the water bills, and we make sure people say that we're simply sharing information on behalf of a service. As a municipality that's a member of AMO, this company provides this service, it's your discretion whether you choose to do it and any contact you want to have with them for follow-up rates, you hear some more.
Yeah, I just think that's some additional language that we're not legally responsible for any issues that may arise, I think is important because people will still get that letter and think that we are somehow promoting it because it's on our letterhead. So as long as that's clearly highlighted, I think we'll be fine.
And I think the thing we also have to let them know is that it's not LAS that's coming out going to do your repairs, you choose whoever you wish to do your repairs. So that it, it, you know, it's not at, strictly an insurance company, similar areas, if you meant for your house, your fire or anything else.
Any other comments or questions on that? All in favor? All right, so new notices of motion that have been presented at this meeting, so we have one here that, that's filed, moved by Counselor Donato, seconded by Counselor Buffett. Be it resolved, staff investigate the cost of another flag pole for the town of Shelburne and report back to council. So that motion will be considered at our next council meeting. Are there any other notices of motion? No? Okay. All right, so that takes us into communication. There are four items of communication there. The, the last letter, there was a letter received from Shelburne Police Association and, and I provided a response. I would like to ask staff to send a copy of each letter to the Police Services Board for their reference. So the motion dealing with communications reads it all, or sorry, reads that council receives the items listed under eight point zero communications and places them on file. A movement seconded, Counselor Fegan, seconded by Counselor Hall. Any other discussion on those items? Yeah, so before we move into closed session, just get a verbal motion to authorize us to sit past 9:30 in the procedural bylaw. Counselor Donato, Counselor Hall, all in favor? All right, so we, we have a short in-camera session, shouldn't be longer than 30 minutes. Some motion that we enter into closed session to discuss personal.